Good afternoon, I believe still. I'm calling the March 11th, 2025 meeting of the Board of Education per Government Code Section 54950 at Secofer and Education Code Section 35140 at 4:31 PM. We will be adjourning to closed session for the purpose of discussing the following matters. 3.1 Public Employee Discipline: Dismissal, Suspension, Release, Leave, Assignment, and Non-Relection; Non-Reappointment/Reassignment/ reinstatement pursuant to Government Code 54957; Resolution Number 24.15; and Resolution Number 24-16. 3.2 Personal Matters: Public Employee Appointments; Employment pursuant to Government Code 54957, Acting Superintendent Contract. 3.3 Conference with Labor Negotiations; Dr. Alan Musserino; Acting Superintendent Joan Velasco; Interim Assistant Superintendent Administrative Services. Oh my gosh.
That's a lot.
A lot. You guys have a lot of titles. Yolanda Mendoza, Acting Assistant Superintendent Human Resources with CSEA, APLE, and PLUM. 3.4 Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation; Terry Tao from Tau Rosini, APC. Conference with Legal Counsel: Existing Litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1: Magnolia Science Academy, Orange County versus Placentia Yorbalinda Unified School District. 3.6 Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation; Significant Exposure to Litigation pursuant to Paragraph D2 of Government Code Section 54956.9. Prop 39 Requests for District Facilities from the California Republic Leadership Academy. 3.7 Conference with Legal Counsel: Existing Litigation; Radlauer versus Board of Trustees for the Placentia Yorbalinda Unified School District. And we have two people wishing to speak.
We do, Madam President. Would you like me to invite them up? Okay. Our first speaker will be Dave. He's going by Dave tonight. Dave, welcome. Please approach the podium.
Tonight's closed session agenda includes a discussion about my lawsuit. Instead of first participating in that discussion, Ms. Blades chose to take to social media in a lame attempt to discredit me and make wild allegations of collusion. Do you really want to make this personal, Leandra? Sorry, I just don't roll that way. But if you want to continue to play keyboard cowboy, you go right ahead and if it amuses you. What I want to do is present the entire picture unlike your performative rant. When we were in court back in November, the judge did deny my ex-party request to keep the board from voting on what I still believe are a series of unlawful contract amendments. What you failed to mention to your friends on social media is that the judge made no ruling and offered no opinion about the lawfulness of the contract amendments. Instead, he concluded that he would allow the vote to go forward but if the amendments were passed, the board may have to face the consequences of their actions. The next phase of that same case is what is on the agenda tonight. I had no intention of speaking on this, even though I, although I, unlike you, am not prohibited from discussing items on the closed session agenda. But in light of your most recent actions, I feel compelled to set the record straight before the board's deliberation. What comes before the board tonight is an opportunity to return this district to normal operating order. The amendments passed by the former majority were a naked attempt to grab power from the incoming and duly elected board. The attempt was so brazen that the amendments were explicitly written to expire at the end of the current board term. In other words, they were specifically designed to target incoming and duly-elected trustee Tricia Quintero. Your repeated attempts to divide this community, violate the sanctity of the closed session, rant on social media, ignore the mandates of the Brown Act and the Education Code are disgraceful. With regard to my lawsuit, why race to social media prior to the closed session? Why not do a little more listening before attempting to stoke division? In closing, I ask that you imagine how you would feel if a future outgoing board attempted to do the same thing to you. I, for one, would join in what I'm guessing would be your apoplectic outrage. It's not about loyalty, it's about following the rules, whoever wields the gavel. The rules exist to allow the will of the people to decide the direction an elected body will take within the bounds of the law. All sides must be heard with an open mind, but minority control stands in stark contrast to the principles of our representative school district. Routine employment decisions are simply not the sort of decisions the legislature intended to be made by anything other than a simple majority. Have some courage, do the right thing, and return order to the operation of this board. Thank you for your attention.
Our next speaker is Lynda Cohen. Please approach the podium.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm in an interesting position tonight. I know a little bit more than I knew when I wrote this speech. I begin by saying Mr. Radlauer, I believe I'm saying that correctly, in a public comment February the 11th, really got my attention when he made the following statement. Marilyn, 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 thank you for what you do. We'll get through this together. And my question is, who exactly is this Mr. Radlauer and exactly what does he mean, Marilyn? We'll get through this together. Is this the same Mr. Radlauer who went to court, I guess it is, to prevent the former board from giving supermajority protection to Dr. Chernis and Gates? Former superintendents Alsasser and Matthews had that same supermajority protection, but not Chernis and Gates? Same Mr. Radlauer who paid a major role in the union campaign to elect Mrs. Anderson, again, and Ms. Quintero to join trustee Buck? Who does this new majority represent? Do they represent the parents, the children, and the community, which we normally expect a board to do? Or the union that paid for their campaign? Is this the same Mr. Radlauer ever-present with union campaigners who claimed that $1.9 million was somehow pirated cafeteria fund? It wasn't true back in June, and it's not true now. Is this the same Mr. Radlauer who joined you, Mrs. Anderson, to claim that developer funds simply could have been used to repair the cafeteria? Again, they could not, and your claim is not true. Same Mr. Radlauer who joined the crowd to claim that USI was just a fancy $3 million gym for rich kids? Let me point out something, Mrs. Anderson. Listen carefully, please. An elite athlete is not necessarily a rich kid. In fact, why do you want to deny the disadvantaged kids in your area who may be highly skilled athletes but don't have the money to attend other institutes that cost money? Our institute is free. And yet, on February the 11th, you yourself said inexplicably, "USI is very unequal." Valencia doesn't participate, and the reason they don't is because you told them not to. You told them this was an elitist, rich-kid institution. Not true. Finally, is this the same Mr. Radlauer who joined the union in claiming that Chernis and Gates are corrupt and incompetent, and your investigation will prove it?
Thank you for your time.
And now he's suing you? How will you get through this together?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mrs. Anderson.
And that concludes our comments.
We will now adjourn to closed session at 4:40. Good evening. We'll go ahead and reconvene at 6:34. Thank you so much for your patience. We really appreciate it, and we have nothing to report out of closed session. And I'm going to ask Mrs. Buck if she'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sure. Everybody, please stand. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will, all board members are present, including our student board member, Leila. Glad you're back after your big, exciting award night at the last meeting. I'm sure we'll hear more about that. Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion that we approve the March 11th, 2025 Board of Education Agenda as amended.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mr. Frazier. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, 5-0. Public comment cards are available in the foyer. Cards must be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment, provided a maximum of three minutes per person. If translation is needed, an additional three minutes will be given. Please let us know. If we know ahead of time, we can ensure we are prepared. And reminding everybody of our civility policy, Education Code 220 prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other characteristic that is contained in the definition of hate crime set forth in Section 422.55 of the Penal Code, including immigration status. So I need a motion for the minutes for the February 19th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of February 19th, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Frazier, a second by Mrs. Blades. Any questions or corrections? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, 10.2, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 11th, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mr. Frazier. Any comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
5-0. Okay. Now we are ready for our recognitions. So we're going to turn the time over to Dr. Young.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, President Anderson, members of the board, executive cabinet, and acting superintendent, Dr. Alan Musserino. Tonight, we have the privilege of celebrating the incredible artistic talent of our students as we recognize the top five winners of this year's artworks poster contest. At this time, I would like to invite our outstanding student artists Olivia Southwell, Isabel Parker, Vincent Brown, and Suah Cha, and Annie Liu to please join me at the lecturing. Each year, artwork showcases the creativity and talent of students across our district. As part of this year's exhibition, all PYL USD students were invited to participate in the artworks poster contests centered around the inspiring theme endangered species and nature conservation. Winners received a $50 Blick Art Materials gift card, and their artwork will be prominently displayed throughout the district, raising awareness about our annual district art show. First, we recognize Olivia, a talented third-grade student from Bryant Ranch School. Libby, if you could raise your hand and wave. A look at her design is on the screen before you. Her piece, titled "Animals Deserve Protection Too," beautifully captures the heart of this year's theme. When asked about the inspiration behind her work, Olivia shared, "The heart-shaped earth in my art represents how much I care about endangered habitats. I sculpted a tiger, a monarch butterfly, and a panda, all of which are at risk of extinction if we don't take action to protect them. I love these animals, and that's why I chose them for this conservation art piece." Olivia, we are in awe of your creativity and your passion for conservation. Here is your certificate, a recognition of your incredible work, and a special thank you as well to her teacher, Ms. Lindsay Clark, for encouraging and guiding Olivia throughout this artistic journey. Let's give Olivia one more round of applause. Next, we recognize Vincent Brown, a seventh-grade student at Parkview School. Vincent, if you could, thank you, raise your hand. Vincent's piece is titled "The Protector," and it is a powerful depiction of the responsibility we all share in safeguarding nature. When asked about his inspiration, Vincent shared, "Just like a mother protects her young, we should protect the most vulnerable in nature, like the giant panda. I created this painting because I love pandas, and I don't want them to become extinct." Vincent, thank you for using your artistic talents to remind us of our role in protecting wildlife. I have a certificate of recognition of your outstanding work. Now we honor Annie Liu, an eighth-grade student from Yorbalinda Middle School. Annie, if you could wave? Annie's piece is titled "Bird Bro," and it's a detailed, I knew I was going to get some laughs from that one. It is a detailed and playful take on nature conservation. When asked about her inspiration, Annie shared, "Bird Bro is a nature conservation-themed artwork featuring a cute bird in the wild perched on a piece of wood. Like all wildlife, this bird is not just a part of nature, it's also our bro, a companion in the world we share." Annie, your unique perspective and artistic style have brought this theme to life in such a meaningful way. We're honored to present you with this certificate of recognition. We would also like to extend our appreciation to Ms. Leann Tangney, whose guidance helped nurture your artistic vision. Next, we recognize Isabel Parker, an 11th-grade student from Esperanza High School. If you could please wave, thank you. Her artwork is titled "Beneath the Stripes," which showcases her incredible skill and deep understanding of this year's theme. Isabel shared, "The inspiration behind my artwork had mostly to do with addressing the alarming rate of habitat destruction for many land animals, especially the tiger. The bones and reconstruction of the tiger is supposed to symbolize the strength and vulnerability of the animal. My artwork is meant to be an homage to the apex predator that is known for its beauty and strength, while it is simultaneously one of the most vulnerable animals of our time." Isabel, your piece is beautiful. We are thrilled to recognize you with this certificate for your lovely contribution, and a heartfelt thank you as well to your art teacher, Ms. Lynn Magnin, for providing support along the way. All right. Last, but certainly not least, we celebrate Suah Cha, an 11th-grade student from Eldorado High School. I know by process of elimination, we figured it out. Her piece is titled "The Shared Breath," and it is a profound and thought-provoking reflection on the connection between humans and nature. When asked about her artwork, Suah shared, "My piece explores the vital connection between humans and nature, symbolizing the interweaving of life and death. It highlights how humans are part of the natural world, even though our actions may sometimes harm it. The artwork conveys the theme of interconnectedness and suggests that, in the end, humans return to nature, continuing the cycle of life." Suah, your work is both moving and visually stunning, and we're honored to recognize you with this certificate, and a heartfelt thank you to your art teacher, Mr. Kyle Thomas, for providing guidance and inspiration to you along the way. The opening night of artworks will be Monday, March 31st, and it will be held this year at the Nixon Library and Museum. The exhibition will run through the entire month of April, and we invite all community members to visit. To conclude, we would like to invite our amazing poster winners to shake hands with our board members and join us for a group photo at this time. Okay. Tonight, we are also proud to recognize three exceptional middle schools. The Orange County School of Computer Sciences, Toffrey Middle School, and Yorbalinda Middle School for earning the distinguished honor of being named 2024 California Schools to Watch by the California League of Middle Schools. This prestigious recognition is awarded to high-performing model middle schools that demonstrate outstanding teamwork, innovation, and a steadfast commitment to student achievement. Additionally, we would like to honor El Camino Real High School for being re-designated by the California Department of Education as a 2025 Model Continuation High School, recognizing its unwavering commitment to student success. At this time, I'd like to invite the incredible principals leading these schools, Dr. William Gray, Ms. Sarah Barton, Ms. Paige Stills, and Ms. Gina Aguilar, to please join me at the lecturing.
I should have worn my heels.
All right. This year marks the first re-designation for both OCSES and Toffrey Middle School, and the third re-designation for Yorbalinda Middle School, a testament to their unwavering pursuit of excellence and continuous improvement at their schools. At the Orange County School of Computer Sciences, interim principal Dr. William Gray expressed immense pride in this achievement, attributing this honor to their mastery-based learning model, where students gain the skills to excel as creators, collaborators, and innovators. Additionally, our cutting-edge innovation lab offers hands-on experiences in animatronics, computer science, entrepreneurship, engineering, art, video production, esports, and gaming. With dedicated teachers and a focus on high-quality learning, we integrate CSTEM through UC Davis into science, math, and electives, blending robotics and computer science into these key areas. Most recently, our teachers have been featured on Corwin's Fisher &amp; Frey series in their latest book entitled "Rigor Unveiled." Impressively, 47% of our staff hold specialized credentials, and seven of the staff members are distinguished award winners. There is so much to be proud of at OCSES. Great job, Matador staff. At Toffrey Middle School, Principal Sarah Barton attributed this honor to her school's culture and a sincere commitment among staff to stay ahead of the curve when it comes to responding to the changing needs of Toffrey's student population. She shares, somebody's FaceTiming in, this is important. "Toffrey Middle School has recently made significant academic gains, notably increasing their math proficiency by 9.1% and English Language Arts proficiency by 7.7% in 2024. The mission statement of Toffrey is to empower all students to be compassionate, well-rounded individuals who are prepared for college and career pursuits. This sentiment is exemplified in 82% of students taking part in school-based extracurricular activities, and 54% of the student population taking part in school athletics, and 41% of all students being a part of the music program. Keep up the great work meeting your students where they are, Falcon staff. Congratulations, Principal Barton." At Yorbalinda Middle School, Principal Paige Stills reflected on the foundation of her school's success, emphasizing its strong commitment to student success through a multi-tiered system of support. She shared examples including, "Our PBIS framework fosters a positive school culture, while our weekly B3 intervention program provides targeted academic support, and our school-wide instructional focus ensures high-quality learning for all students." Additionally, our PLC, Professional Learning Community, for those of you who don't do ed-to-speak, process promotes collaboration amongst educators to continually enhance student achievement. We're honored for your continued strive for excellence. Congratulations to the Bobcat staff and Principal Stills. This past weekend, these three outstanding schools were honored at the California Schools to Watch conference and celebration, where they were celebrated for their dedication to excellence. Finally, tonight, we have the distinct honor of celebrating an incredible achievement by El Camino Real High School for being re-designated as a Model Continuation High School. This prestigious recognition is no small feat. El Camino Real High School is one of only six continuation schools in Orange County and among just 74 statewide to receive this honor. What makes El Camino truly stand out is its holistic, student-centered approach to education. Through innovative programs like the Edge Intervention Period, academic support services, and social-emotional learning via School Connect, students receive the tools that they need to thrive. The school's focus on college and career readiness through find-your-grind, the integration of avid strategies, and the personalized intake meetings with students and families ensure that every learner is set up for success. Beyond academics, El Camino fosters a strong sense of community and belonging with initiatives like flexible scheduling, personalized support, and engaging campus events such as Welcome Week. Principal Aguilar shared her pride in this achievement, stating, "I'm thrilled to see the exceptional efforts of our staff being recognized by the California Department of Education. As our mission emphasizes, we are committed to preparing students for future success by maintaining high expectations in a supportive environment, where each student's unique strengths, goals, and needs are valued. The Model Continuation High School program is centered around addressing the whole child, and this recognition affirms our staff's dedication to fostering a culture focused on academic achievement, college and career readiness, and student wellness." Congratulations to El Camino Real High School on this outstanding accomplishment, and to the staff who are here tonight as well, thank you for all that you do for our Raptors. I would now like to invite our four principals to shake hands with our board members and join us for a group photo to commemorate this achievement.
And for those of you who might not be familiar with these programs, both the Model Continuation School and the Schools to Watch program, it is a rigorous and competitive process. So this is a very, very proud moment for these leaders and their schools and PYL. So again, thank you for celebrating with us.
If our guests want to leave, you're welcome to. If you want to stay for the excitement, you're welcome to. Thank you to the parents who came tonight in support of their kids and getting them here, and to the teachers that taught these wonderful students. Thank you. Yeah, and to Okay, we're going to move on to our presentations, and I turn the time over to Ms. Velazca to introduce our next presentation.
Well, good evening. I'd like to ask Terry Tao to come to the podium. Terry Tao is a senior partner and shareholder of Tao Rosini APC, a professional corporation. He practices primarily in the area of school and public works, construction law, architectural malpractice, construction contract administration, ADA physical barrier claims, land use, environmental law, and related matters. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Tao.
Well, thank you very much. Just a little bit of quick background. I also happen to be a licensed architect, have been for the past 30 or so years, and facilities law for schools is pretty much all my entire practice. So what we're going to talk about today is Field Act. So in 1934, there was a major earthquake in the state of California, and that resulted in the passage of a number of laws, the main one being called the Field Act. What the Field Act did was it made all schools in the state of California subject to a much higher standard of safety, a much higher structural standard. These are some pictures that I picked out that I think are helpful to illustrate how devastating an earthquake can be and why it was that the state decided that they needed higher safety standards. This is a middle school over at Compton Unified that was destroyed by the earthquake in 1934. This is a Poly High which still stands. If you drive past Poly High today, you'll notice it doesn't have that nice dome that fell down in 1934 because that dome did not survive the earthquake. There was one death in 1934 because of the earthquake, and that was at Poly Highs because it happened early in the morning. The legislature wanted to make sure that this did not ever happen again in the state of California and passed the Field Act then, and the state has been creating safer buildings, buildings that are safer pursuant to building code, and they regularly police the area, which is part of the reason why I'm here today. So DSA provided the district a notice that two of their buildings over at Valencia High School, specifically the boys' locker room and the library, needed additional investigation. They are called lift slab buildings, and those buildings are buildings that the state, over time, has identified as needing a little bit more investigation. It doesn't mean the buildings are unsafe. It just means that the state has identified these buildings and wants the district to look at them and try to identify if there are any vulnerabilities, any upgrades that are necessary with regard to the buildings. There is actually a state program that was set up to specifically address any buildings that are subject to any seismic vulnerabilities called the State Seismic Mitigation Program, which if there is a determination that these buildings are potentially subject to or more vulnerable to earthquake forces, then they would be eligible under the State Seismic Mitigation Program. So these are just identification from the documents of the particular buildings. Lift slab is a form of construction that is a little different. So I'll just briefly describe what the form of construction is. If you've ever seen a tilt-up building, what they do with a tilt-up building is they basically build the walls of the building on the ground, they pour it, and then they tilt it up. A lift slab building is much the same concept. They pour the second floor of the building, and then they lift that floor up, and then they tie it together. The state has suddenly decided that this is not such a good methodology, and they want us to do an investigation, which we have commissioned structural engineers to start doing that investigation, and they're working as quickly as they can to do what's called an ASEE 31 and an ASEE 41 analysis of the buildings to determine general vulnerabilities. So these are some of the original applications. I just figured you would want to know. The Valencia High School dates all the way back to 1935. These buildings were built in 1962. So lift slab buildings were generally built in the late '50s, all the way up until the late '60s. There are quite a few of them actually scattered throughout the state. They all got the same letters from DSA. So we weren't special. There are a number of buildings that were also identified, and let's just say I've been making this presentation up and down the state, identifying that a school district has a lift slab building, that they need to do an investigation, doesn't automatically mean unsafe. It just means we have to do the investigation. So there is something called design immunity. It's Government Code Section 830.6. This is lawyer talk. I'm just going to tell you what it means. It just means that the state of California, once they approve a building, it's deemed safe. It's deemed to have met all building department and building code criteria. So that's the standpoint that we generally come from. Our goal is to keep design immunity on buildings, and the place where you start to lose design immunity is if somebody identifies that there's a problem. Like, for example, if you're driving on a freeway and you notice that there's dip that is particularly hard to negotiate, you notice the public entity, the city, Caltrans, that they have a problem. They're supposed to investigate. They have reasonable time to investigate, and then they're supposed to fix the problem if indeed it's causing accidents. Same concept with regard to school buildings. We've now been identified. We have reasonable time to investigate. That's what we're doing, and that is prescribed by Government Code Section 830.6. Here's just an example of a letter, so you could see that generally, the state of California certifies that the buildings meet building code, and they also meet these higher standards. This is PR 803. It's to address the state funding that's available. Generally speaking, the school district, if it's found that the building is vulnerable, will be eligible for what's called state seismic mitigation funding. It could be potentially up to 50% of the repair costs associated with the buildings. So we'll determine that as we're doing the investigation. On the agenda, you have a resolution, and the reason you have the resolution is to document -- we've already started the study, but I did want to make sure that we documented for everyone's awareness that we've got this notice. The buildings are generally safer than all other buildings in the state of California. They're built that same vintage, and that we are going to do this investigation. If we find that there are any vulnerabilities, we will immediately seek state funding, and since it's only 50% state funding, then there are other options that we'll need to discuss if it turns out that you need to pursue this option. So that is what the resolution is for. It's to make sure that the buildings are up to current science. So I'll give you an example. So for some of you, you're probably too young, but I'm going to just mention this. There was a car called the Corvair. And let's just say that you are a young family back in the '60s, and you bought a Corvair, and you decided that this was the car for you. And you're driving it around, and then this guy named Ralph Nader comes along, and he goes, "Hey, this car is unsafe at any speed. You should not drive it. It's going to kill you. It's going to be really bad." Are you then going to take that car and junk it, or are you going to drive it for a little while while you're very careful with it in order to make sure that the car is not going to get you into an accident? So I compare it to the science has changed. It's just like the difference between a car that has an airbag versus a car that doesn't have an airbag. Of course, a car that has an airbag is safer. So what the state of California did was they identified for us something that they want us to study. It would be nice if the state did it for us, but they don't. So the district is going to spend the money that they did not plan on spending, but they are going to have to, and they're going to do this investigation. They're going to pursue this until the building is either fixed or they determine that the building is not a building that needs to go through an upgrade. So this is so that everyone is aware of what the problems and the issues are. With that, there's a resolution on the agenda. Any questions?
Does this necessarily mean that the building has to be not used anymore? It's not usable?
I would highly not recommend closing a building down just based on a notice that you received from DSA. In fact, I brought a little quote, and I'll read the quote for you. So the State Seismic Commission actually issued a report on November 15, 2002, and I figured that this would be helpful for you to identify what a school building really is in the state of California. It says, "Public school buildings in California are the safest in the nation. They exceed the seismic standards required for most other buildings and have proven to provide a level of protection that assures the safety of California public school children. Since the passage of the Field Act in 1934, no school has collapsed due to a seismic event, and there has been no loss of life. Nonetheless, the need to constantly examine conditions in light of a better understanding of building performance is necessary to maintain the high standards that is historic in California." So what's happening is the Division of State Architects has identified something they want you to study, and your study is going to tell you if the building is something that needs to go through an upgrade. I don't believe that you're going to get a result that says that you have to abandon the building, but if you do, I will let you know that once the study is back. But as of right now, you can rest assured the building is safer than all other schools and buildings, all other buildings of that vintage, but there's a science issue that has identified that this building needs to be studied.
And the -- great presentation, by the way. I think you covered lots of great points and educated all of us on how this works. Just to be clear, this is a notification that we need to investigate, not a notification that we have a problem. The investigation will tell us if we have a problem and then what resolutions we need to come to, correct?
You are correct. It's just a notice.
It's just a notice. It's nothing to worry about at the moment.
Correct.
But we need to go through the steps.
That is correct.
I just wanted to ask about the resolution. I appreciate that we're putting that out so that we're identifying and sharing with the community all the steps that we're going to be taking. Is that a requirement that we do as a result of this, or do other districts do this as well?
Some other districts do it. We recommend it, and the reason we recommend it is there's a lot of things that happen in closed session. Generally, if you're discussing something where you're talking about potential vulnerabilities, that typically happens in closed session. But for this Board of Education, it's extremely important for this to be transparent, so that you know what it is that the Board of Education is doing, you know what the Board of Education is thinking about. So the Board felt that it was important for the public to know that these two buildings within the Valencia campus were identified, what it is that the Board is doing about it, and how we're going about to both seek funding and to fix the problem as quickly as we possibly can. That's not to say that there won't be an earthquake tomorrow. We just don't know. But we wanted to identify it just in case, make sure that everyone was aware, and to have some transparency.
To be clear, you said an earthquake tomorrow doesn't necessarily mean that it would be a problem, but I'm just saying, because you made a comment, I'm like, well, that doesn't mean that if there's an earthquake, we have a problem. That just means that would be the incident that would cause us to see a problem.
Correct.
Potentially.
That is correct.
Are you sure, Leila? That is your school?
And she spends an hour in the library every day, she told me, so.
My son went to that school, so I have no concerns about the school whatsoever.
That's good.
And I am an architect, so I can tell you that. The school is generally going to be safer. Don't be scared of it. But the district is going to do a full investigation and is in the middle of it.
Sounds good.
Okay. I have one question. In your presentation, you said that if we have to fix or tear it down or whatever comes, that the state could provide up to 50%. Does the state normally hit that 50% range, or is it somewhere a lot lower?
That is a really good question. Having done a bunch of these, just generally figure the state figures some way to not give you the true 50%. They calculate 50% based on this formula that is actually out somewhere. As far as I can tell, it looks like the formula is coming somewhere out of Fresno. So it really works out to be about 50% of about 70% of the cost. So it will for sure come up short. Just as a quick aside, I don't usually make the Board run out and find as much funding as possible in order to replace or repair buildings, but we try to do it in a very organized fashion. It takes a little while for DSA to do these evaluations generally, so there will be plenty of time to figure out where you're going to find the funding, if you're going to find the funding, if you're going to seek a bond, for example, in order to try to make up the shortfall. You're right. The state pretends like they've funded 50%. It's going to be like 20% or 25%.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I was afraid of.
So there's no need to do a district car wash this weekend to start fundraising. We're okay.
The car wash will come. I'll be there.
Is there any other questions?
So how many -- I mean, this is all an estimation. How many of these situations are going on right now at school districts in the state of California, and how many typically happen in a year? Like, is this an annual thing, or is this every once in a while?
The lift slabs are actually relatively new. There -- I looked at the list. It looks like it's probably about 25 schools. I didn't count, but it looks like there are about 25 schools, both in Southern and Northern California. Seems like a couple more in Southern California than in Northern California. They're all well-known districts, so you've probably heard some of these presentations elsewhere. There's also another program that's going on. Interestingly, you've already done a lot of this program. In the early 2000s, there was a program called AB 300, which was buildings that -- the building code changed in 1978. So there are a bunch of code changes. In 1978, there was all the code changes from the Soma earthquake, which was side-to-side motions. Then 2000, there are all the changes from the 1994 Northridge earthquake, which was an up-and-down motion, and those changes resulted in AB 300. And there are a number of districts that have done the AB 300. I think you've done a bunch of them. Fullerton High, for example, did all of theirs in the early 2000s. So a lot of districts have been doing these upgrades over the years.
Okay. One question about timeline. When should we hear something back, and when should the public expect to hear something back about these buildings, about the investigation?
I was going to check with the structural engineer after we were done today. I wanted them to get their application in as soon as possible. So I would say you -- we'll probably give an update within the next six months or so, and then give you an idea as to eligibility for state funding. What you've authorized right now is what's called Phase 1, and they're under that PR that I put up. There's also a Phase 2, which is a -- you'll love this. State makes you do a theoretical set of plans, even for buildings that you're going to tear down. So we're going to have to do that theoretical set of plans. And then after we do the theoretical set of plans and DSA approves those, then they will will approve here for funding. So it's a little bit of a process. I don't know why the state makes it so difficult, but it will take it'll take a little bit of time. Not a lot, but it'll take a little time.
Any chance we can do theoretical theoretical plans?
That's exactly what they make you do. So any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to turn the time over now to Mrs. Renee Gray for the California Youth Behavior Health Initiative.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, President Anderson, trustees, and Superintendent Musserino. As we continue to prioritize the well-being of our students, I'm pleased to introduce an opportunity that aligns directly with our mission to support their mental and behavioral health. The California Youth Behavioral Act Capacity Grant provides critical resources to strengthen the systems that serve our students, ensuring that they have access to the care and support that they need to thrive, both academically and personally. Our district has already made significant strides in expanding wellness initiatives, and this grant presents an opportunity to build upon that foundation. Tonight, our Director of Student Services will share how we plan to leverage this funding to enhance services, improve access to behavioral health support, and ultimately create a more resilient and well-supported student community. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Director of Student Services, Dr. Baldwin Pedraza, who will walk us through the plan.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gray. All right, well, good evening, Board President Anderson, Dr. Musserino, Board of Trustees. Today, I wanted to take an opportunity to provide you an overview of the Children, Youth, and Behavioral Health Initiative, which I'm going to refer to as CYBHI, and the School-Based Behavioral Health Incentive Program, which we'll all call SBHIP. Two initiatives that are designed to expand the mental health services for students. I'll focus on how these programs impact PYLUSD, particularly in terms of funding opportunities, sustainability, student support, and alignment with our existing efforts. So student mental health challenges have been rising for over a decade, with the pandemic further intensifying the crisis. Schools have become critical access points for support, as research shows that addressing students' mental health needs help thrive help students thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. We see the impact firsthand. Mental health struggles can lead to chronic absenteeism, lower academic achievement, and overall well-being concerns. However, with access to school-based mental health services, they are more likely to stay engaged, attend regularly, and succeed. Despite this growing need, schools often lack sustainable funding to provide these services at scale. That's where CYBHI and SBHIP come in. These initiatives create a funding pathway for schools to expand behavioral health services by allowing districts to bill insurance providers, including Medi-Cal and private insurers, for school-based care. This ensures more students receive the support they need when and where they need it. California is taking a bold action to address our nation's growing mental health crisis among children and youth. So at the heart of this effort is the Children and Youth Behavioral Health Initiative, a historic four-point-seven-billion-dollar investment that is part of the state's master plan for kids' mental health. This initiative takes a whole-child approach, recognizing that mental health is shaped by a variety of factors: education, healthcare access, social supports, and community resources. CYBHI is built around four key strategic areas: workforce training and capacity, expanding the strengthening the behavioral health workforce to ensure that children and youth have access to the supports that they need; public awareness, reducing stigma and increasing understanding of mental health by providing resources and information to families, educators, and communities; coverage pathways, improving access to care by simplifying and expanding behavioral health coverage for children and youth; behavioral health ecosystem infrastructure, transforming the way mental health services are delivered by integrating care across schools, community agencies, and healthcare providers. By investing in these areas, California is working to build a comprehensive, youth-centered system of care, one that ensures all children and young people from birth through age twenty-five receive the mental health supports that they need to thrive. The Children and Youth Behavioral Health Initiative is a transformative cross-agency effort in California aimed at enhancing those services for children and the youth. Led by the California Health and Human Services Agency, CYBHI brings together multiple state departments and local partners to create a more coordinated and effective system of care. These entities collaborate to implement a range of programs and services, ensuring that young people across the state have access to the behavioral health support they need. Some of the state departments include the California Department of Social Services, State of California Office of Surgeon General, and some of our local partners include the Orange County Healthcare Agency, as well as the Orange County Department of Education. This initiative is focused on building sustainable funding for school-linked student behavioral services and ensuring that students under the age of twenty-six at all public schools, colleges, and universities can access these services. The goal is to improve the availability of school-based behavioral health services. One of the exciting aspects of this program is that it allows local education agencies, along with their contracted or affiliated providers, to obtain reimbursement from a variety of funding sources, including Medi-Cal managed care plans, Medi-Cal fee-for-service, commercial healthcare plans, and disability insurers. These entities are obligated by the state law to reimburse eligible providers, such as those with pupil personnel services credentials for their services. Ultimately, this program will increase access to mental health services, ensuring that students statewide can receive the care and support they need, no matter where they are. As part of the ongoing commitment to student wellness, PYLUSD is leveraging the CYBHI Capacity Grant to expand and enhance behavioral health services across our schools. This funding will allow us to strengthen mental health support, increase accessibility for students, and improve our ability to track and coordinate the care through integrated electronic healthcare health records system. As you can see here, PYLUSD's allocation for the Capacity Grant is a little over one-point-one million dollars. We know that mental health plays a critical role in student success. When students receive the support that they need, they are more engaged, perform better academically, and develop essential coping skills for their future. By utilizing this grant, we are taking a proactive approach to ensuring every student in PYLUSD has the resources they need to succeed. The CYBHI Capacity Grant provides funding to strengthen behavioral health services for students and families. And how these funds can be used, seventy percent of these grant funds must be used to build operational readiness. So first, Medi-Cal enrollment. This includes outreach efforts to help eligible students and families enroll in Medi-Cal, ensuring they have access to covered behavioral health services. Next, service delivery, infrastructure, and capacity building. This means expanding provider networks, hiring staff, and investing in technology to increase the availability of mental health services. Then data collection and documentation. Funding can support systems that track services, measure outcomes, and improve coordination between providers. Finally, billing infrastructure. This helps streamline billing processes, ensuring accurate documentation and timely reimbursement for those services that are provided. By investing in these key areas, the grant supports a more sustainable, efficient, and accessible behavioral healthcare system for our students and families. The CYBHI Fee Schedule Program is designed to standardize those reimbursement rates for mental health and behavioral health services under the CYBHI initiative. This program ensures that providers receive consistent and transparent compensation for services delivered to children, youth, families, making behavioral healthcare more accessible and sustainable. The fee schedule outlines specific rates for different types of services, including individual therapy, group therapy, crisis intervention, and case management. So here's some key steps involved in the CYBHI service provision process, from delivering care to reimbursement. First step in the process is the services provision by PYUSD service or contracted providers. Once a service is provided, documentation is crucial. Service providers log in services into our EHR or Electronic Health Record System. This ensures accurate recording, continuity of care, and proper claims processing. Next, Carillon Behavioral Health Services serves as a third-party administrator for CYBHI and oversees claims processing and ensuring that all submitted claims meet program requirements before moving forward into the billing cycle. After documentation, we must submit claims through our EHR-integrated billing system, and this allows for a streamlined process, reducing manual errors and ensuring timely submissions of our service claims. Once a claim is submitted, Carillon reviews it for accuracy and compliance with CYBHI guidelines. If the claim meets all requirements, Carillon facilitates reimbursement based on the CYBHI fee schedule rates. This ensures that providers receive appropriate payment for those services delivered. This essentially, this process has been known to take about four to six weeks, as we're seeing right now. So let's talk a little bit about who can provide those services through the CYBHI fee schedule in our district. Mental health specialists, those includes both licensed and associate clinicians, who are either employed or contracted by PYLUSD. These specialists will play a vital role in delivering mental health services for our students. Next, we have PPS credential practitioners, which includes school psychologists, social workers, counselors, and registered school nurses. These professionals are also employed by PYLUSD, are trained and credentialed to provide the crucial behavioral health support within the school setting. Additionally, community-based organizations that are designated by PYLUSD can also deliver behavioral healthcare services. These organizations are critical partners in expanding the network of support available to our students. Together, these groups of professionals will help ensure that our students have access to the mental health and behavioral services they need, both in school and through our community partnerships as part of that fee schedule. So PYLUSD actually currently already participates in a reimbursement program for special education services. So our district already utilizes the LEA Medi-Cal Billing Option Program, often known as BOP, which allows us to receive reimbursement for special education services provided to eligible students. This program has been instrumental in supporting the health-related services we deliver through individualized education programs and individualized family service plans. This program helps fund health-related services that are delivered to students as part of their IEPs and IFSPs. As we move forward with exploring the CYBHI Fee Schedule Program, our goal is to expand access to school-based mental health services, not just for students in special education, but for all students across the district. By building on the foundation of programs like the BOP, we aim to enhance our ability to meet the diverse needs of all of our students, making mental health and behavioral services more widely accessible. There are many significant benefits for PYLUSD's participation in the CYBHI Fee Schedule, which further supports and aligns and enhances our existing initiatives. One of the key benefits is the increased funding for behavioral health services through participation in the fee schedule. With this additional funding through reimbursement, it will help us enhance our current efforts and ensure more students have access to the support that they need. With CYBHI, we will see expanded school-based mental health support, which is crucial in providing timely onsite care for students. This helps reduce barriers to care and ensures students are supported within the school environment. This program will also improve student access to care. This broadens the reach of our mental health services, ensuring more students and families can take advantage of the support that is available. There will be no cost to families, no copays, and those receiving these services will not affect the students or families' coverage under their health plan or insurer. CYBHI also supports the long-term sustainability of our district-employed service providers. This ensures that we can continue to retain and invest in high-quality professionals, securing consistent and reliable support for our students. And most importantly, this is this program is aligned with our existing initiatives, such as multi-tiered systems of support and our family resource centers. By expanding access to mental health services, CYBHI enhances our ability to implement MTSS effectively, ensuring that students at every tier, whether in need of universal, targeted, or intensive support, receive right level of care. In addition, this program will complement work with our family resource centers, allowing us to provide more holistic support to families and ensure that our students, regardless of their background, have access to the services that they need. So let's dive into the Student Behavioral Health Incentive Program, or SBHIP, as I had mentioned earlier, which is an important component of CYBHI. This is a three-hundred-and-eighty-nine-million-dollar program. It's spread over a three-year period and is designed to incentivize and support school districts in expanding and enhancing their behavioral health services for students. With CYBHI expanding mental health services district-wide, SBHIP specifically focuses on addressing access barriers for Medi-Cal students and improving school-based interventions. By working together, SBHIP and CYBHI help build a more integrated, accessible, and sustainable mental health system for students. SBHIP provides funding to schools and districts to improve access to mental health resources, implementing new programs, and then strengthening their existing support systems for students' behavioral health needs. This funding can be used to support a variety of initiatives, such as increasing the number of mental health professionals on campuses, providing training for staff, and creating systems of better coordination of care for our students. In relation to CYBHI, SBHIP serves as one of the financial mechanisms that helps schools implement the broader goals of CYBHI, which include improving young mental health services, reducing barriers to care, and increasing the availability of behavioral health resources. So next steps for PYLUSD. Following the identification of targeted initiatives in collaboration with districts' representatives, the next step in the process involves implementing strategies that align with these priorities. These initiatives are designed to improve access to the quality of behavioral health services for our students. Behavioral health risk factors or indicators and referrals. Our focus will be on creating standardized processes for measuring behavioral health risk factors and indicators, ensuring timely referral for those services. Building stronger partnerships to increase access to Medi-Cal services. We aim to strengthen those partnerships with Medi-Cal providers to help our families access the mental health services they need. IT enhancements for behavioral health services as part of the program will invest in technology upgrades to enhance the delivery and tracking of those services, ensuring more efficient and data-driven interventions. And then technical assistance support for contracts. So we'll provide ongoing technical assistance to help district teams to help with navigating the complexities of behavioral health contracts, ensuring compliance and maximizing the use of our available resources.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Any questions? I know that was a lot.
I have some questions. What is the age that the children are seen and are the parents notified when their child is seen at school?
Yes, the age of students. So we have services that are available to all of our students. And of course, any student that's going to be seen on a consistent basis, we would need to get consent by the parents in order to be seen.
No matter what age?
No matter what age, yeah.
So if a seventeen-year-old has to be seen, you tell the parents?
We work to to work with our parents to get consent for those services, yes.
Okay. And so can the families opt out if they choose to do so?
Yes, the families can opt out if they choose to do so.
And then what? Who determines if the child needs services? And is there any medication that is given?
No, there's no, we don't do medicine or medicine management or anything in that regards. That would be something they would get from a doctor, so.
Okay, so I I know the answers to these questions, but these are questions that have been asked to me, so I'm kind of asking for the community. And so when the counselor, if if a child is goes to like the normal counselor, is that an automatic billing? Because I've been hearing that like through this other program that we've been using for special education, that sometimes even our sped testing is billed. So like if something's wrong with the kid and they go see the counselor the first time, would we bill that like, you know, for the counselors that automatically billed? Or is this for over like kids are going to go see a certain counselor, it's going to be like more of a, you know, more than a one-time thing? And that's when it starts billing? Or is it just every initial visit?
It could be an initial visit, but there's the fee schedule gives a different types of services that are available and then time limits on those. So it just would depend on the level of what that service looks like, whether or not it would be billable or not.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I think that was it. I had another question about it. How is it going in? How is it going in our special ed education? How is that program going? Are we seeing any enhancements? Any, you know, are we losing funding? You know how like it seems like funding gets lost or not going, you know, where it's supposed to be?
Actually, we're doing very, very well. So we have quite a few special educators, like our our nurses are part of the billing, our school psychologists, our speech and language pathologists. We only have one audiologist, but that person could bill too. So all of these different providers are able to bill, and we meet with Paradigm is our EHR, you would call them. And they just met with us this week, and they give us data on how well we're doing, and we're up to almost a million dollars this year. We'll probably hit a million. And so that goes back to, I mean, it funds a lot of stuff, actually. And so to me, this program really is the answer, because we know budget constraints the way they are. This is one answer for getting the behavioral health services that we need.
So we weren't, obviously, it's been working well for us with special education, so it would just be, this would be on our mental health side. So there's nothing like waste, fraud, abuse, any of that that we need to worry about? Or anything that like we're going to be, you know, culpable for?
No, not at all.
Because obviously, this is billing now. Because obviously, this is billing now out of a school district, you know, or a school sites. Does the school site bill? Or do they send it over to the district office and then the district office bills?
It goes all through the district office, and a lot of district offices are even building, you know, infrastructure for billing. We kind of have a few people in special ed that are already doing it because they're familiar, and they'll talk to the person at Paradigm and work with them. So the way we envision this is something of that nature would happen in general ed.
So just so everyone understands what has been going on with special education, can you just explain like what the process would be like? So if you test a child or whatever happens, and then how the process goes through, and then how we get paid?
Yep. So we do assessments, which is the testing. We'll do what we call treatments, which is the, if a speech and language pathologist works with a student, let's say on their, our problem, and all of those things are billed. And so they go into Paradigm, and it's actually an online system. And they used to do this, I mean, way back in the day, I'm aging myself, but on, you know, pen and paper now, and then they started to do it online. Now they just go straight to the Paradigm system, and it's their way of documenting, and it's much easier. So what we would do is build the capacity for the other, what we call pupil personnel service credential folks, to be able to bill that same way. Once they bill, I mean, once they put their particular treatment or assessment, it goes into the system, and they do nothing else, except we just keep track. And then we meet quarterly with these people, and they tell us how much money we're generating. And then it's kind of back billed, and they'll tell us, we have this, what's called a CRCS audit, and we're always waiting to see how much money we're going to get from that. We meet again, and then they tell us, oh, now you're going to get 500 and something thousand for that. And then they tell us the money we're bringing in. And we know that special ed always has a large local contribution, so we're really trying to get extra funding for special ed because we're an underfunded mandate, right?
Right. So if I'm a parent at home and I hear about this program, I'm not going to be concerned that for the district to be making money, there's going to be pulling our kids into the counselor's office willy-nilly and billing?
No. In fact, this is really a way to bill for, and I think this is critically important, for existing services. These services, our counselors are working like crazy, and we need to fund them. We need to fund more of them.
Yes.
We need them at the elementary level, and we don't have an answer to this. And I think this could be, I don't want to make all these empty promises, but this could be potentially one of the ways to do that.
And so this is a way to get our staff back up?
Mm-hmm.
Because we're getting the money, and then now we can fund the positions.
Yes. So you saw it was 1.1 million, and then the SBHIP is 220,000, so do the math, so we get all that. And then we start now, because we already have it, we received the money, then we start building. And we say, okay, who's going to help with this? What office, you know, what is this going to look like? And we bring a team together, and we ensure that special education is there with us, and then we build the system. And then we start billing, I'm just, we're crossing our fingers, in '25, '26, and then we start generating. And the more, you know, all the services we're already doing, we turn it, then we get, and we'll report out what we're getting, and then we can look at adding more staff.
And so another question would be is, why did the state start giving us the money back when we've been doing this for years with no compensation? What was the change?
Yeah, it's really interesting. It's a $4.7 billion investment from the state, and I think it has to do with mental health of our youth. I mean, I'm looking right here at all this data. It's kind of alarming, and I don't want to talk about it, but the suicide rates, and we have a lot of data in our office, and at the end of the year, we'll be presenting this to you. But it's pretty much transforming the way that California supports children, youth, and families within the school system. But not only that, remember the cross-agency description he gave, also with schools and colleges, and also with homes and communities. So this investment is kind of making a triad out of all those things and saying, we all have to invest in our students' mental health.
Right. Okay. I think that's all the questions. Thank you.
Is this going to work similarly to the current way we do IEPs now, how the parent has to check the box during, when they write their, when they sign their paperwork, there's that little box that says we can bill. If they don't, then we don't bill.
Yes.
Correct? Is it going to work the same way where the parent has to agree to?
With consent.
One of the things, I know we've talked about before, that the efficiencies of billing is a bit of a problem, right? And I noticed that we can do billing infrastructure with this. Is there any way that this dovetails with all of our billing infrastructure for these specials and for the mental health? Can we?
Yeah, we could. And so we, that was a discussion yesterday, but I was trying to wheel and deal yesterday. And I asked them, how much are you going to charge us? And we heard that somebody, I don't even want to know if I should say this publicly, but, okay, but anyway, I said, how, what percent? And they're like, they told me the percent, I won't say it. I'm like, hmm, a little too high. So we'll see. We're trying to get the percent that they will take to help build this to be lower. But that's what we do, we wheel and deal. So we'll eventually get something that we think is reasonable, bring it to you, and say, okay, this is what we think we can get.
And these funds are able to be used for that, to build the foundation so that that efficiency is built in?
Yes.
And then that increases all of these billing, these reimbursements, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely, all of them. It's already stuff we're doing, we just need to build the infrastructure.
Yeah, we need the system.
We need the system.
Good. One question, not to jump ahead, Joan, but is projections for the benefit of the efficiencies in billing, is it built into the budget or not?
Not yet.
It is not? So we are not being optimistic and saying we're going to include it in our budget. This is not included. That will be an additional, the efficiencies we get here will be additional in the future.
Yes.
I like that. We're being conservative.
And by the way, we also do that with special ed. It's always a surprise. We don't count on getting any money, but our people are so great and everybody bills. But we're like, we don't think we're going to get anything next year. We're just trying, and we're always reinforcing, but we always do. Because we don't want to, you know, we want to under-promise and over-deliver.
Over-deliver, that's right. Perfect. Good. Great.
A lot of my questions were unanswered. I love it. I am familiar with CalAim and what it's done for the families experiencing homelessness in the county through CalOptima and the ECM, which is the Community Supports and Housing Navigation. The infrastructure grant is so key, and it takes a good nine to 12 months really to rev up and get to that point. But it is amazing. It's done a lot for all of the shelters, the family shelters out there, and the support that they can provide, because now it's helping pay for their staff, so that they can not worry about trying to fundraise for that, but pay for their staff and then fundraise for the actual services and money that they need. So it sounds very similar. I think it'll even layer on, because we have at PYL, the third highest number of McKinney-Vento students in all of Orange County compared to any other district. The third highest. So Santa Ana and Anaheim are, and then us.
Wow.
So it's shocking. Actually, and Capo is right around where we are too. So this will be super beneficial because all of those students will qualify for Medi-Cal. I'm curious as to, you answered a little bit about the school site level. I was curious as to what time it was going to take, but if it's going to, if it's, you know, maybe, I don't know, you could answer that if you know yet. And then the other question is related to data sharing requirements. So do, I know we're putting it all in there, and we're looking at a little data that you mentioned. I'm curious as to what kind of data we can utilize to best improve services, to be able to look at that. Will we get information related to how to improve services, not only, not only just the funds that potentially we could make from it?
So, you know, I don't know if you want to answer, but, so the data sharing, I think we're careful with that, right? So we have FERPA, we have HIPAA, we have all of these regulations, and we want to make sure parents are aware of what's happening, that they consent to it. But in terms of the data that we gather as a team, we do a lot of, at least this past year, we've done a lot of data gathering, data analysis, disaggregating different, different mental health areas that we're seeing more, let's say, at one level than another. And truly, one of the things, in fact, I was talking to Dr. Musserino about it today, is coming back and sharing with you all some of that data since we've been collecting it all year, because it kind of informs you about, okay, what do we need to do next year as a result of what we're finding? Because, again, I don't think we're out of the ordinary, but you can look at the data, like I was just looking at this. It's, you know, we all know, we watch the news, we know what's going on in society. It's somewhat shocking with our youth, you know, what we're seeing mental health-wise. So we can take the data and we can look at it, but there's also protected data as well.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. My question was, which Mrs. Buck kind of asked as well, but I don't think we got an answer. What is the timeline for the buildup? Is it?
Oh, I didn't, timeline for buildup, I was thinking staff.
Yeah. Timeout, timeline for the buildup before we start.
Yeah, so the timeline that we're looking at, being optimistic, but we can, if everything goes well and according to planned, we could be up in billing by the next school year, '25, '26, probably late fall, early, yeah, late fall, early, early winter. And like Ms. Gray had shared, we actually have a lot of our staff members that are, that can participate, that already have familiarity with billing system, and that's going to be an asset for us, for sure.
Yeah. And then there was one other question. You said you're going to contract with a third-party billing company?
Yeah, so that's.
The EHR is Electronic Health Records, that's who we use with Paradigm, but there's a third party that's called Carillon. They're actually, we don't have to, they're already going to be embedded within and working with Paradigm to help make sure that everything goes smoothly in terms of claim processing.
And that's a contract with the state. So the state has a contract that they just told us about, and it's throughout the state of California, and it's through Carillon. So they'll work with, if it's Paradigm, if it's Healthy Campus, if it's, Liberty was one.
Leader Services.
Leader Services, yeah, there's just different ones.
Different vendors, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any others have any questions? Oh, Leila.
Oh, sorry. I have a question really quick. I'm not 100% sure if you can answer this, but I heard you mention that there will be transparency with the parents, and while I think that's great, when you're having these sessions with students, are the students aware of what will be shared and what won't be shared? Like, is there a level of privacy that the students will be having with the people that they're speaking to?
Yeah, that's a great question, Leila. There is a level of, you know, privileged information between, of course, you know, the counselor and students, but it'll be, you bring up an important point, it'll be good to make sure that transparency and communication with the students and families is, it's going to be important moving forward, for sure. Yeah.
So is it, when you're in these meetings, is there talk about finding, like, are we looking for why all of a sudden there's this, been this explosion over the last, you know, however many years, five, six, seven years? Like, it feels like we're treating, like, we just like keep treating this, but like, are we looking for any root causes? Is there like the research, like, are we trying to find out what is actually going wrong so like we can kind of fix the problem as, I guess the kids are younger or stuff? Because it kind of seems like if you keep having mental illness, if you keep having, you know, sick people, if you keep, you know, you're just kind of just keep treating and treating and treating?
Yep.
Like, but are we actually trying to find like the root cause and like trying to weed that out? Or is this just kind of like we're just fixing the problems as it comes?
And nobody may have the answer to that, but I'm just saying. That is, you know, like a million dollar question, for sure.
I'll join you with this. That's a great question. When we think of safe schools, we think of fences and surveillance cameras and so on. But this is how you build a safe school, by identifying where the troubles and potential behaviors are manifesting before it's too late. You know, the first thing that comes to mind, you talk about how we could root out that. Well, these cell phones right here have really impacted schools in a big way, and many, many districts have already moved in that, successfully have moved that way. So that's one way to address it. But, you know, this district, as I've been meeting children and teachers and schools, you know, PBIS is a program, Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Program, that's rooted in relationships. And it's restorative in a way that once those relationships are established, then it's a safe space for children to talk, and they're more likely to share, and more likely than for our team to be able to support that child. There certainly isn't a simple solution, and I'm happy to bring back to the Board of Education, the community, some of the innovative strategies that are being used around the country and internationally, really. Because this isn't just a problem here in America, but it certainly has proliferated since, you know, it's COVID pretty much, right? We could pretty much count that.
At least we saw it.
Yeah, well, good point. That's when it became, right, it became evident. So anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I would say too, so we, because of funding, we, over the past year, we're funding, and everybody knows us, elementary counselors at the Title I schools. But what we're finding with our data is we think that that's where the mental health problems are. They're not. It goes across any socioeconomic standing, period. And we, when we're looking at the suicide ideation rates, they're actually higher in our higher-income areas. And so what this tells us is there's a lot of pressure on kids. And so I wholeheartedly agree with you about this. I also think that we really put a lot of pressure, and I'm going to, I'm going to maybe take a risk in saying this, but on the academics. We push so much. Now, it's really important, but we've got to balance that out. And when we do that, when a lot of the students we see, when I was a counselor, it was the same thing. There's a lot of pressure. So I think the more we can educate our families on this, the more parenting, the more community building, the more relationships, and the more bringing our parents into the fold. We're involved with Ed Services and Community Engagement Initiative, which doesn't need to just be with certain families, it needs to be with all families. And so the more that we work together with families and bring them in so that their opinions matter and they help us build what we want to build, I think we'll see a difference, too.
Yeah, and the evidence is pretty clear, when students are connected to their schools, so your children are in sports, they're in band, they're in a variety of different programs, they have another adult that they could connect with and get to know. So having more and more programs that serve more and more children, so even if they're clubs. But I know from my years as a teacher, keeping your room open, you know, during lunch before and after school all the time so that children have that safe space. But it certainly is a wonderful thing to continue to build a variety of opportunities. But that takes adults to run these programs, right, and support these programs. So another great program from the state is the Extended Learning Opportunity Program that funds after-school programs. So another way to help additional time in the nine-hour day to support children, because I believe they need our support more than ever.
And I'm hoping too that this opens a conversation for early intervention, like in elementary school and middle schools with coping programs such as calm classroom and things like that that we can implement, like teachers can implement during the day, of different strategies to cope with stress and anxiety and things like that, that helps, like you said, helps mitigate the problem before it gets out of hand, and hopefully helps nip it in the bud when they're younger.
You're talking about building those skills, right?
Yes, building the skills, but building it into our, like, into a classroom day as part of, part of the lessons.
Yeah. All right. Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're going to turn it over to Dr. Young.
Sure. That was a perfect segue, Dr. Musserino, talking about the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program. So good evening. Yes, you did. You set it up perfectly. Hit it out of the park. He's ready. On the, on the consent calendar this evening, you're going to find a proposal to purchase nine electric passenger vans, of which eight will be utilized by the Expanded Learning Program and purchased through the use of the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, or ELOP, which is a state-led initiative providing funding for after-school, summer, and inter-session enrichment programs for students in transitional kindergarten through sixth grade, focusing on developing their academic, social, emotional, and physical needs. And so at this time, I'm pleased to turn it over to Dr. George Lopez to share about our future plans of our growing Expanded Learning Program and how the approval of these vans will assist us in meeting students' needs. Dr. Lopez?
Thank you, Dr. Young. Good evening, Board President Marilyn Anderson, board members, Acting Superintendent Dr. Musserino, Executive Cabinet. Tonight's presentation will provide a brief timeline of our after-school programs, the positive impacts of ELOP funding, the future plans of our Expanded Learning Program, and the electric vans we seek permission to invest in. To begin, it is important to visualize the historical timeline of our programs then and now. The Expanded Learning Program began in 1985 and through 1997. We operated 16 parent-paid after-school programs, serving roughly 300 students, average of 18 students per site, with zero programs at our Title I schools. During this time, our programs are more of an after-school childcare to meet the needs of working families and keeping children safe on campus. In 2000, the Federal 21st Century Fund helped open our Title I after-school programs. However, these fundings expired after two years. 2002, Proposition 49 was approved by the voters to continue to work on the previous funding for after-school programs. Today, ACES is a vital help support our families who need after-school program at no cost. By 2004, all 21 elementary schools offered an after-school program between childcare and ACES. Today, we service over 2,600 students across 21 elementary schools and three middle schools. We are proud of our committed and hard-working classified staff, and we continue to seek solutions to full vacancies, including creating student supervision assistant positions, contracting with outside vendors, and we are currently undergoing CSEA reclassification discussions for the childcare series. We are also working closely with our site principals and maintenance and facilities to open classrooms to grow our program. Our enrollment has grown because of ELOP. ELOP provides for all students regardless of their zip codes. ELOP has changed the landscape of after-school programs in many ways. For example, our parent-paid program is designed to be affordable for our families. 100% of our parent-paid income pays for the salaries, supplies, and snacks. This meant offering enrichment within our financial means to keep the program physically sound. Our dreams of offering more enrichment, sports, academics, and transportation for our students always fell short to funding. But dreams do come true. In 2022, Assembly Bill 130, Expanded Learning Program, offered all California LEAs funding for school programs coined ELOP. The funding is specifically for our unduplicated pupils. The funding has helped change every aspect of our after-school program for all 21 elementary schools and middle schools. So in 2023, we got to work. With ELOP funding, we partnered with outside vendors, offering our students soccer, basketball, pickleball, dance, theater, coding, and robotics. ELOP funded any certificated teacher willing to teach after-school intervention in reading and math. We purchased portables for the ACES program at Topaz and Ruby. Last, we have upgraded classrooms and furniture. And by June, we anticipate to purchase, anticipate two large shade structures over the Rio Vista, Rio Vista's playground, a need the community had been asking for many years. In 2024, we needed to increase staffing to meet our growing student enrollment. We offered dual positions. This offered any classified part-time employee to come work with the Expanded Learning Team, making them full-time with health benefits. We created a job opportunity named Student Supervision Assistant for any 11th or 12th grade student to join the Expanded Learning Team. Great way to earn money while gaining a quality experience. In 2025, the need to do more. We will expand to all six middle schools, Toffrey, Kramer, and Yorba Linda Middle School, set to open this fall. Additionally, we have a waitlist of interested families to our existing programs. Today, we are seeking the board's permission to invest in electric passenger vans to address the waitlist and expand our programs in ways that offer students access to experiences that many would otherwise never see. We are at the tipping point to offer more, to do more for our families. ELOP has provided access for thousands of our students to enrichment, academic intervention, sports, the arts, and much more. However, there is still one barrier, our waitlist, which is due to staffing and available facilities. In addition, ELOP requirements for student-to-teacher ratio is 10 to 1 for TK and K and is 20 to 1 for grades 1 through 6. To address this, we are seeking the board's permission to consider to use ELOP funding to purchase electric vans to transport students from a high-enrollment program to a program that has space. As mentioned earlier, funding, ELOP funding stipulates, LEAs must offer transportation for any student attending a school without an ELOP program to a location that has a program. The vans will help transport students from one location to another to meet the ratio if needed. Additionally, the electric vans will help create an opportunity to offer experiences for students to engage in elementary intramural sports through ELOP. So imagine, bring in school spirit, gathering of families, also an opportunity for our schools to showcase to our community why PYL is a district destination, a district of destination. The electric vans will transport groups of students from one school to another to compete for fun. With all elementary and middle schools offering Expanded Learning Programs next year, the vans will be used. Also, our focus is to provide our Title I students to take yoga classes, financial literacy classes, and culinary classes at a centralized location. For example, our ACES program has partnered with Yorba Linda High School Culinary Pathway, have offered to teach classes. Our Expanded Learning Vans would be used to transport students to and from this location. This is important to our team because of the research and young students being exposed to these opportunities. We know food choices, calming techniques such as yoga, and financial literacy are needed to help to change the trajectory of any student. Last, future use. We know not all family choose our programs. We see vans in our parking lot after school from outside vendors such as Karate Dojo, the After-School Tutoring Depot, and the Boys and Girls Club coming to pick up and transport our student to their location. Our future goal is to, one day, find a location and open a one-stop after-school community. A community center where we offer all enrichments to family who are seeking outside what we offer at the school sites. Our electric vans will be used to transport students. The Expanded Learning Vans we are proposing to purchase carry nine passengers and the driver and are equipped with GPS and interior camera. And we will have a custom PYL branded Expanded Learning wrap. We will work with Transportation to seek qualified drivers. The electric vans will be in operation Monday through Friday with other district departments using them through a bill-back when our department is not using them outside of the 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. In closing, in 25 months, we created an Expanded Learning Program that is no longer just a childcare, but instead provides quality enrichment, academic intervention opportunities for students. Our staff also receives ongoing training and we collaborate with the California After-School Network to stay current with research, state funding, and policies. We serve over, we serve over 2,600 students after school from TK to eighth. And if we had more classrooms and staffing available, we can accept more students. We offer a no-cost summer enrichment. We offer a no-cost academy support program for our English learners. We offer summer, winter, fall, and spring camps for our family who need a safe place for their children to spend from 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So given the permission, we can expand and offer more to our families. The growth of our after-school program will no longer be a dream, but a reality. The electric passenger van will be used to change the trajectory of hundreds of students. This concludes the presentation and I invite any questions. Thank you.
I'll go first, I guess. First question, why electric, not gas?
I would like to invite Richard from Transportation.
You knew we were going to ask this question?
Yes, good evening. The state of California is really pushing us to go to EV. And in 2000, by 2035, we do have to go completely EV. And so we've got a really good deal with this EV and it's going to give an opportunity for our staff to really dive deeper than our nine buses that we currently have. But it's just the way that California is pushing us. The ICE engine, they call it, internal combustion engine is getting harder and harder to find. We can find them with vans right now. It's harder to find them with school buses, but it's just the way California is really pushing us. They're really pushing us to EV. So for instance, even on a, on a maintenance truck, for every one ICE engine that we have to buy, we have to, in California, we have to show that we've bought another, matched it with another EV. So it's something that the California Air Resources Board is really pushing Transportation, or even the school districts, LEAs, even private companies, really go to the EV.
It's a requirement or they're recommending?
It's a requirement for every gas or ICE engine we get.
So one-to-one?
One-to-one, correct.
One-to-one, okay. So, because the biggest question I had was capacity. Nine, that's not a huge van. And you're talking about sports teams in the future. That's not a whole sports team of any sport. So I'm a little bit curious as to why we wouldn't do maybe like 15-passenger, if we've got to go one-for-one. If that's the requirement, I'm assuming that's the requirement based on what you're saying, then why wouldn't we go 15-passenger, 15-passenger gas, nine-passenger electric, unless there is more capacity in electric?
So it's a good question. So when it comes to 15-passenger van, the National Highway, National Transportation Safety Board does not recommend the utilization of 15-passenger vans because of the, once you get with that type of vehicle, with that many passengers, you have a high center of gravity and the rollover potential is higher. Also, that requires a commercial license. So with these vans, we're going to be able to get drivers that, they still have to meet the new Senate Bill 88 that came out in October, but it doesn't require a commercial license. And so that's why we would stay with the nine-passenger. If, in the cases where there are sports teams that need a higher capacity, we can utilize the school buses in those cases.
Well, I don't know a sports team that has nine players, less than nine players plus a coach.
Yeah, I don't know how that would look for ELOP.
Well, there's multiple, we had multiple
I thought too, I thought that it was overturned about the EVs in 2035. I heard that that was overturned, that they can't, was like unlawful or unconstitutional or something.
In California, I have not heard that.
I did hear that it was overturned, so we don't have to go electric.
Let's look into that. Let's look into
That's something that we can definitely
Because that is a real thing and not that I'm saying down with electric. I mean, I've had a Tesla before. I don't anymore.
It's a good car.
But my point is
Until you don't have electricity.
That's right, until you, but there's several things between the cost of it upfront and then just the capacity. Now, what is the maximum that you can get size-wise passengers before you have to get that different license?
It's the nine. So anything nine plus the driver, anything above 10 passengers or more requires a commercial license with a passenger endorsement.
Okay. I think it's great for after-school stuff and for elementary. I don't see many more uses because nine's not that many people. That's my only, that's my biggest concern is, I love the idea. I think it's great. I think we need transportation to get more kids involved, absolutely, 100%. How do we do it so that it's also more beneficial in other places? So let's look into that.
So actually, to piggyback on you, Todd, so Carlos Rodriguez, who, they QMD when we did the electric buses, I guess they have more to give to us. So maybe that's something, he's looking for somebody to email. I guess they want to offer us more electric school buses. So I guess I can, I know who to have him email now to talk about that, because if you're worried about the capacity, if they're willing to just give us more buses, then that might
So we've got driver issues, but, 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 I mean, more buses would be great.
Yeah, that South Coast grant, the South Coast AQMD grant is out. The deadline to apply is, I believe, April 18th. We are going to apply. We're going to use, we're looking to stack that with the ZSB grant, which we already currently have a resolution with, and just to limit the cost, because with the grant, it's still about $100,000 out of pocket. And with the South Coast AQMD grant, the infrastructure funding isn't quite there, like the ZSB, I think they're only offering $20,000 per charger when it comes to the buses. But it's something that we are, versus the ZSB, which is offering $75,000 per charger, but it's still something that we're going to be looking into.
Well, I'll let Carlos know this. He needs to have a better deal for us.
Absolutely.
Okay.
In addition to that grant, too, we do have to crush a bus. We have to trade a bus and it has to be matching, so
A gas for electric?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm never
That's crazy. That's Gestapo stuff, man. Come on. I love the idea. I think it's fantastic. Do we have a cost?
Each van is approximately $90,000. It's just, it's $88,000 and change.
Okay.
And we can afford this? Because I know a lot of these extra things, you know, people are talking about. So we are, I mean, so that's almost a million dollars in vans?
Through the ELOP funding, yes, that's how we would be purchasing a van.
Okay.
Is that included in the budget?
In our ELOP budget, it is, yes.
No, I know, Dawson, Joan.
Yes, it is.
So this, this is included here?
When we get to my presentation here, it's a restricted program. And so right now, it's being funded very well by the state. And so we, you know, they're looking to continue with the different opportunities for the students. And so this is one way that we can provide more services to more students and it is already in the budgets.
Good, okay.
And you have to spend that money?
Oh, yeah, no, totally.
It's like developer fees. You got to spend or you lose it. ELOP funds is the same way. And how long do we have to spend ELOP funds? Is it the same way? Is it like two or three years or is it every year we have to spend it?
By June 30th.
Oh, so it's each year. You have, so they give it to you and you have a year to spend it or you lose it?
Correct.
Got it.
If we, if we approve it, when would this, like, would this go into effect before June 30th? Would we buy the vans this year?
Yes, we can purchase the vans this year and we can get delivery before June 30th.
And if we wait until next meeting, I'm just, I'd like to see if we can do one-for-one, if we can do, if we can multiply how many kids we can transport.
So we have extra money right now in ELOP that we have to spend or we will lose it. So we don't want to push this off. We want to get the purchases in because we don't want to send any money back.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't want to send any money back.
I don't want to send any money back to the state.
How quickly can we know if we can do more? The one for, I'm just saying combustion versus electric. I'd like to see if we can
Yeah, yeah, can we do, can we buy with ELOP money? Could we buy, like, gas vehicles?
It's something we can look at. I do know the manufacturers or the vendors, they do have the EV in stock. Gasoline, they might not, but it's something that we can definitely
Because if we can get 50% more vans, that's 50% more kids. I mean, if we're, potentially cost, I don't know what the cost is, but that would be interesting. I'd like to know that.
Oh, no, I was just, I was thinking you were asking for bigger vans, because I was going to ask if we're short any bus drivers at the moment.
You're going to drive it?
And, no, 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 because that's why we're going van-wise rather than bus-wise, because we're probably already short bus drivers for regular buses. And so to add more buses, it's really not going to help because we have nobody to drive them, correct?
Fortunately, we now have six subs. Two of them will be filling the full-time position. So our trainers have been working very hard to make sure that they've done the training and given original classes so that we can get drivers in. And also, we've been promoting ourselves, so we've been also taking drivers from other districts, so.
That's what I like to hear.
I love stealing people. It's great.
I just
We're able to, so we're able to have drivers for the buses we have if we need to possibly use them all between elementary and middle school and then high school sports.
Yes, absolutely.
I just, I guess my point is, I'd like to maximize this as much as possible. If we can go larger vans, great. If we can go more vans, great. Whatever we can do to maximize this and not go out of budget, I think that would be important, because the more kids we can get involved, the better.
And how are you guys advertising for the other districts? Are you like, you know, how is that happening? Because you're obviously successful.
It's really word to mouth. We have a great culture within our Transportation Department and so drivers, there's no secrets with drivers. Every, it's a really small community, especially in Orange County. And so as the word gets out and they, you know, want to come work for us.
Very good.
Yeah, I shouldn't be telling that on, like, somebody.
That's true. We are recording.
Let's keep our secrets to ourselves.
I have a question. What do the parents do if we are transporting their child to another location? Are we automatically bringing them back to that school site at the end of the day or are those parents picking them up at that particular school site?
We bring them back to the school site.
Second question, it's sort of related but not related to vans. Families that sign up for summer, the summer program, I have heard that it goes by very fast. So the spaces fill up like crazy. And by the time they fill out the application and submit it for one kid and pivot over to their other sibling, that space is gone. And so they, there's been some glitch in the signup for summer school so that the siblings aren't, they aren't able to do that simultaneously.
So when the parents do call in and they say they're unable to get the other sibling in, we manually put them together.
Okay. So they So they, la- uh, some, someone had that issue and so they ended up not participating altogether. So it would be really important if we could let them know that if they have siblings to follow up with that, um, as part of that, um, application process. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm for EV.
And that was going to be my question.
For the combination, right.
Because I also heard from, um, a parent that they were able to enroll their kids, but they were at two different sites in this, and, you know, in elementary. So parent would have to drop off one and then go drop off the other at the other site. So if we could help do something to make it more convenient for our families, to mitigate any, you know, this kind of frustration for our programs, summer, fall and winter, those seems to be the main issues. Is there very popular programs?
Absolutely.
No, for the summer break and fall break.
I thought you said winter too, I was like, so all year?
All year. I'm just, I'm just realizing, we're not voting on this, are we? This is not a vote. It's in consent, right?
There's the ban.
Yeah, yeah, okay, it's in consent.
I'm going to pull it and talk about it again.
Do we both drink coffee tonight?
Are you guys good?
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much, Dr. Lopez. Okay, we finished our presentations. Mrs. Armand, Mrs. Armand.
Good evening, President Anderson, Trustees, Acting Superintendent, Dr. Musino, and Executive Cabinet Members. I'm excited to be here tonight to share my recent updates from our comprehensive high schools and alternative campuses. So Buena Vista Virtual Academy student Samuel Nguyen, an 11th grade early graduate, participated in the 26 Holocaust Art and Writing Contest in the poetry category. He was selected as a finalist in the high school poetry division. At Parkview School, Elise Proctor has been recognized as a National Honor, Honor Society Scholarship National Semi Finalist. She has earned a $32,000 scholarship in recognition of her exemplary dedication to the NHS Pillars of Scholarship, Service, Leadership and Character. At El Camino Real High School, um, in alignment with its college and career readiness initiatives, El Camino students have engaged in multiple college field trips. These visit, these include visits to Fullerton College for the Male, Male's Achieving Success Conference and the Extended Opportunity Program. Additional upcoming events include the Female's Achieving Success, Success Conference and an orientation session for students planning to enroll at Fullerton College in the fall. Last week, students had the opportunity to tour, tour Chapman University where they explored the dormitory, dormitory facilities and interacted with current college students. The school is also preparing for upcoming events, including a Red Cross Blood Drive on March 27th and Prom on April 4th at the Fullerton Elks Lodge. This year's prom theme is Moonlight on the River. At Eldorado High School, their girls' water polo team won the Division Five CIF Championship on February 22nd in dominant fashion, defeating Santa, Santa Paula 16 to four. This victory marks the first CIF championship in the program's history. On March 7th, Eldorado hosted the Eighth Annual Nonsense in the Nest Class Competition, an event that showcases the school's strong sense of spirit. During the event, the class of 2025 narrowly secured the championship trophy, outperforming the juniors. Students from each grade level competed in various activities, including dancing, hula hooping, three-point shooting and mattress surfing while accumulating spirit points throughout the night. A faculty member who attended the event for the first time remarked that it was so enjoyable that they would never miss it again. At Esperanza High School, they celebrated two wrestling state champions at the recent tournament in Bakersfield. Olivia Davis and Sammy Sanchez each secured first place in their respective weight classes, marking the first time in school history that two wrestlers have won state titles in the same year. The Esperanza Dance Team achieved remarkable success at a national competition in Orlando, Orlando, Florida, bringing home three national championship trophies for their performances in palm, 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 hip hop and jazz. This is the first time in 20 years that the team has won three titles in a single competition. Additionally, the Esperanza Baseball Team recently received a new scoreboard, enhancing the game day experience for players and spectators. Upcoming events at Esperanza include the Aztec Experience and Eighth Grade Parent Night scheduled for Wednesday, March 26th, providing prospective students and their families an opportunity to become acquainted with the school community. The Winter Guard Team recently placed first in a competition at Colony High School, further showcasing the school's talent in performing arts. Additionally, the Theater Department is actively rehearsing for its upcoming production of Mean Girls, which will premiere in May. Venture Academy was recently awarded a $1,000 grant from the Placentia Community Foundation. The funds will be used to establish a permanent coffee cart and acquire a high-quality espresso machine for the Coffee Cats Program. The academic, the academy extends its gratitude to the members of the Placentia Community Foundation for their generous support. Additionally, the Venture Choir successfully presented its Concert of Love performance at the Performing Arts Center on February 20th. George Key School will celebrate St. Patrick's Day with engaging activities designed for both parents and students. Looking ahead, the school is preparing for its annual walkathon, walk and rollathon, which will place at the end of April, followed by the highly anticipated raffle and family barbecue in May. Valencia High School has received over 300 applications from incoming freshmen for its esteemed academic programs, including the Cambridge International Bachelor Laureate and Valtech Academies. Academy Orientation Night will take place on Wednesday, March 12th, followed by a New Tiger Orientation Night on March 19th, where students will receive guidance on academic athletic, academic, athletic and extracurricular opportunities. The Valencia, Valencia Academic Decathlon Team excelled in recent competitions, placing first in Division One Super Quiz and securing second place overall in Division One. The team has once again qualified for the state competition. In the field of cyber, cybersecurity, sorry, Valencia's team participated in the LA CTF Competition at UCLA, competing against over 700 teams nationwide. The students demonstrated expertise in cryptography and reverse engineering, with the top two teams tying for first place and urging, earning cash prizes. Yorba Linda High School has an amazing spring season at, um, with various athletic teams achieving promising starts. The school is particularly excited about the launch of its inaugural beach volleyball program. The Performing Arts Program are in full swing with color, color guard band, choir and orchestra preparing for upcoming festivals and competitions. Meanwhile, the Theater Department is rehearsing for its spring musical production, Bright Yorba Linda High School recently commenced Olympics Week, featuring a variety of competitions, including a cornhole tournament for participation from both students and staff. The week-long festivities will accumulate in the Olympics Rally, which will include student performances, a staff performance, interactive games and spirit building activities. That is all.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to ask if you wanted to share about your experience last month during our board meeting?
Um, it was really amazing, so I don't know if you guys know where I was, but I was getting awarded for my scholarship to Northwestern University. Thank you, thank you. Um, it was really cool. I mean, it was really see, really cool to see all the other people who are going to be attending the university with me. Um, you know, I'm really excited to get to know them, but I also thought it was so cool. They like rented out a movie theater. So I never like, I don't know, I've never like, I never got to walk on the stage. Like it was a really cool experience. They had it like all set up and then I got like free popcorn. It was like, it was awesome. I felt very special. I had like a seat with my name on it. Exactly. I was like, I feel like I'm at a movie premiere, so it was really exciting.
Thank you for sharing. Okay, now I'll ask the tough question. Okay, how has Valencia High School and Placentia Yorba Linda Unified School District prepared you for your life beyond high school and to get that award?
That is a very good question. So I would say that Valencia and PYL overall has definitely prepared, prepared me with, um, rigorous academic courses. As you guys know, I'm an IB, um, but they've also given me a set of critical thinking skills that I think I'll take with me everywhere. Um, something that I really love about this district is that, you know, they're definitely very tough on you, but I think that it also comes with a lot of support, which I don't think can be met anywhere else. Um, and I think it's really helped me shape into the qualities that I will carry with me for the rest of my life. Thank you.
Thank you. I like that, tough with support. Okay, we're going to turn our time now over to, um, Dr. Musarina.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board of Education, lay the congratulations. No one gets into Northwestern, so that is just amazing. Uh, Executive Cabinet, yes. Members of the PYL family present and those who are watching, uh, from the luxury of their couch. The LCAP Community Forum, please join us on Tuesday, March 18th. So that would be next Tuesday for the LCAP Community Forum. This public meeting will provide an opportunity for input on the Local Control Accountability Plan. Um, and you know, again, Local Control Accountability Plan now it's, it's, it's in its 10th year and it's starting to finally attract more and more families and more and more members of the community who are engaged in. So I really encourage everyone to come to that event if you can. PYL USD staff will present state dashboard outcomes and action plans for the upcoming school year. Community insights and ideas regarding continuous improvement efforts are highly valued and we welcome your participation. So we hope to see you there from 6 to 8 PM. The Shamrock and Run. So I, I, I will be there, I will run. Uh, I am a runner and I expect to be there. Does anyone, any of my fellow governance team members expect to be there? Yes, that, yeah, okay.
We're not running. We'll wait.
Okay. As a final reminder, our valued partners at the Reach Foundation are preparing to host their annual Shamrock and Run 5K and 2K events Saturday, March 16th. Is this Saturday?
This is Sunday.
It's Sunday, right? Right, okay, I made you, make that Sunday?
I can have to change my calendar.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, no, I knew it was Sunday. I just met, I just messed up there. Sunday, uh, at Yorba Regional Park in Anaheim. Proceeds from this event directly support our annual middle school track meet and other enrichment programs facilitated by the Reach Foundation. Uh, and, and I did get a chance to meet with officials, Giselle and Jennifer from the Reach Foundation and, uh, how wonderful that, uh, they are gifting our children with so many wonderful programs. Proceeds from this event directly support our annual middle school track meet and other enrichment programs. Oh, I just repoke, I repeated myself. Uh, and all volunteer education-focused 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization benefiting all students across our district. For more details and a link to register, please visit the district website. The Principal for a Day, we look forward to hosting our annual Principal for a Day on Wednesday, March 19th in collaboration with our esteemed partners at the Placentia Yorba Linda Chambers of Commerce. Guest principals will have a unique opportunity to experience a day in the life of a school principal as they shadow site leaders on our campuses that morning. The event will culminate here in the boardroom with a luncheon and discussion reflecting on their experiences. We are deeply grateful for the ongoing support of our Chamber of Commerce and community partners, and we look forward to showcase in the incredible work of our students, staff, programs, facilities and site leaders. Uh, and in conclusion, the Chapman University Holocaust Art and Writing Contest. Finally, our middle and high school students recently participated in the 26th Annual Chapman University Holocaust Remembrance Art and Writing Contest. This year's theme was, what do you bring when you don't know where you are going? Each year, students from around the world take part in this powerful contest, engaging in meaningful research about the Holocaust and World War II. As part of the experience, they listen to firsthand testimonies from Holocaust survivors and rescuers, reflecting on their motivations for sharing their stories. Students then create original works of art, film or writing that honor and retell these experiences in profound and creative ways. PYL USD has long been a proud supporter of this competition, encouraging participation across all of our middle and high school campuses. This year was no exception, with 400 of our students taking part. That's outstanding. Notably, three middle school students and one high school student from Travis Ranch, Toffrey and Yorba Linda Middle Schools, as well as Yorba Linda High School have been named finalists. So that's wonderful. Yes, definitely. Congratulations to those students. District and school leaders, trustees and students will attend the contest ceremony at Chapman University this coming Friday to view submissions and celebrate the achievements of all participants. Uh, Madam President, this concludes my report, my first report.
Thank you. And I don't have a tough question for you, so.
Okay.
You can relax.
Thank you for that.
What's your fastest mile time?
Yes, yeah, I think. I think he's very fast. What is your fastest mile time? I would, I think it's very quick.
Um, well, you mean currently or when I was?
How about, how about both? How about both?
Yeah, I, uh, probably around 6:30 maybe on a good day.
Right now?
Uh, yeah, right.
Okay, he may be a winner, a Shamrock winner.
There might be a medal around your neck.
Yeah.
At the end of the day.
But that's not at 7 AM. That's, that's a different story.
Okay, um, that's another reason now for everyone to come to the Shamrock and Run.
To see you break, and you break some new P L.
Yeah, we're all going to have our stopwatches.
I've got pressure on myself.
Yep. Okay, so now it's time for our public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to provide input to the Board of Education. During the public comment period, board members do not dialogue with speakers or make comments regarding the information shared. Each speaker, um, will have three minutes tonight because we have, um, 10 speakers. We ask our speakers to repeat their names when they come up to speak and we will call the first four speakers to sit in the first row, um, so they'll be ready for their comment. So, you did so well early, why don't you keep going?
Okay, and these are in order that we receive them. The first four speakers, Judy Yahuda, Stephanie Abital, Dawn Kaylee and Elaine O'Connor. Yes, please be seated and.
Good evening, I'm Judy Yahuda. As a Northwestern alumni, I have to congratulate you on your acceptance at Northwestern and my advice to you is to invest in a very good coat. Speaking of mental, speaking of mental health, our Jewish students are feeling threatened and unsafe in our classrooms and our schools. And they're afraid to speak up. Since October 7th, antisemitism has increased by over 400%. Some of the things our students are experiencing at the schools in Orange County include bullying on campus from other students, anti-Semitic and Israeli misinformation in the classroom, which includes misinformation about Israel in class assignments and in textbooks. Anti-Semitic and threatening messaging and information is being allowed in student newspapers and yearbooks. And sometimes in the classrooms on, uh, student or teacher bulletin boards. These are just some of the issues that, that we have seen in the past year in Orange County schools. My colleagues are going to be talking about some, um, resources that we feel might some resources that we feel might help address these issues, and I realize, I will say I don't have a clock here. Oh, thank you, that there is an element of social media. It's not totally a school problem, but I can't control social media. So we will be presenting some ideas and resources that we think can help, and I'm asking, I will be reaching out to you by email and asking that you respond to me and be willing to set up a meeting to further the conversation and see what solutions we can achieve to help not just our Jewish students, but all students. It's not just bullying of Jewish students, but it's hate across the board. Thank you.
Whoa, sorry. Okay, hopefully you can hear me. My name is Stephanie Avital. I'm an Orange County resident, and I'm here to talk to you about resources in Orange County that can foster and enhance community and school learning in regard to combating hate in general. I bet you didn't know there's an Orange County Holocaust Museum here, but you don't have to go all the way to the Tolerance Museum in LA with your students. That costs you a lot of money and time. The Orange, the Holocaust Museum also provides funding if needed. All of these resources I'm mentioning are free to the schools and have funding provided. I am a docent at that museum. We encourage you as a board to go to the museum and see it, as well as your staff and teachers. It's usually geared from 7th grade on up through 12th grade, and it's quite a unique experience. It's not a typical Holocaust museum. It's based upon the life of one Holocaust survivor who was a local resident in Huntington Beach. Another source is the Student to Student Program, where students come and speak to your classmates, their classmates in different schools about what it means to be Jewish and what Judaism is. So that's fostering understanding and empathy and education of knowledge. We know that knowledge reduces hate, so that's an opportunity there. That's also provided by the Jewish Federation. Survivor's Play is a play based upon real survivors, and it's acted out, and your students have a Q and A after. So there's an engaging conversation on that. That's also funded. Hope in the Holy Land is a docu-series, a film based upon a local gentleman here who makes films and travels to Israel. He is also a pastor. He's willing to do a Q and A after reviewing the docu-film's Hope in the Holy Land. And the last one is an escape room that is offered to your students. They'll come to the school and set up an escape room with various themes, depending on what the teachers, you know, choose regarding the subject of hate and discrimination against anyone. And the last thing is Friendship Circle. It has to do with our special needs program and our special needs people. You have students that volunteer, and they get their high school credit hours, and they can volunteer at Friendship Circle and work with people in our special needs community, fostering friendships, activities, soccer. They do tennis. They do cooking for young adults, and these programs are offered, again, free to the community, and it's based out of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Dawn Kalai, and I just wanted to talk to you tonight about the potential for abuse with the new ethnic studies curriculum that's coming next fall to all our schools. In general, ethnic studies can take one of two forms. It can be multicultural ethnic studies, which focuses on the history and positive historical contributions of minority groups, or it could be liberated ethnic studies, which leverages race to push partisan political arguments about identity or power and social justice that is rooted in critical race theory. And unfortunately, anti-Israel activists have been working hard to put this in the ethnic studies movements. This is just the latest example of how embedded antisemitism is in education. If it goes unchecked, it will lead to division and hate in our high schools, and you don't have to look any further than your local college campuses to see it in full view. Since October 7th, the country is seeing how embedded and under the radar this has been going on for decades in academia. My daughter is actually a student at UCLA, and the Students for Justice in Palestine group started marching through the UCLA campus, spewing their hate and support for the atrocities of 10/7 on October 11th, 2023, just four days later. Nothing had, you know, started with any retaliation, but they started marching through the school. And how does that happen if it's not organized and ready years in advance? And by the way, they did this because the Israelis were gaining the world's sympathy as the victims of terror, and the Hamas sympathizers couldn't have that. They needed to change the narrative. We don't want to see the same kind of miseducation and gaslighting of any minority to happen in our high schools. We don't want this hatred and division being taught. We need to make sure the high school ethnic studies curriculum is positive and accurate and making students feel proud of their heritage and not feeling attacked or unwelcome. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Elaine O'Connor, and I come with a resource from the Israeli American Council, and you may wonder, why would I sit for two and a half hours to bring this resource to you? It's because I think it's very, very helpful. I feel it just deep in my heart. So, as I know you all are aware, there's many challenges in the rise of semitism and just even recognizing what it is. But not everyone knows what behaviors in the classroom and on the school grounds make Jewish students feel threatened and marginalized. So here are some Jewish students' experiences. Said, "I've been bullied through Jewish and Holocaust jokes, simply from my being Jewish." Or, "When I tell people I'm Jewish, they occasionally respond with, 'Well, you don't look Jewish.'" "I've been a target of antisemitism, but most of the students didn't necessarily know they were being anti-Semitic." Or, "At my old school, a bunch, at my old school, a bunch of swastikas were carved into the chairs in my religious studies class." So the question at hand is, what makes Jewish students more confident in confronting antisemitism in school? And here's some of the answers these students came up with. "I had a teacher I could talk to or report an incident to, or an easy place to report antisemitism anonymously, like online, or to know that your school administrators and teachers understand antisemitism, or having non-Jewish students learn about antisemitism and just themselves learning about forms of antisemitism and how to respond." So the Israeli American Council has a lot of great resources, but the one I'm here to tell you about is the educational program that includes a speaker for staff development presentations and addresses those specific issues I've spoken about, as well as related topics. So an IA specialist has given this development presentation in both Los Angeles and Orange County, including the Fulton School District, and this same educational program can be presented to the Placentia Yorba Linda Unified School District at no cost. I encourage you to contact the Israeli American Council to discuss this program or learn about programs like this one, and thank you for your time.
Our next set of speakers, please approach the front. Steve Chaprow, Sam Maevich, Shari Murray, I think it's Shari.
Shami.
Oh, it's an M. I'm sorry. Shami Murray.
Shami.
Shani Murray. I can't play my New York accent. I was going to try, but I'm not going to get away with it. Shani, thank you, and Leslie Alexander.
I recollected time already. When I think of mental health, Todd, you're better than a caffeine break. You're always good, great personalities. I had this presentation about ready to tear it up because a lot of things, mental health, batteries, that sort of thing. There's 1.1 million vehicles on recall right now that are batteries. Most people don't know there was equivalent of 38,000 Teslas that burned up up the coast and contaminated the entire area. So it's a very political thing. But for three years, myself and a few other retired people from FAA military have been doing lithium battery safety and teaching lawmakers, usually one-on-one, about what's going on and what we're concerned about because my background was 13 years in hazmat and worker protection, and I had a fire at my house, bike batteries just laying out in the heat closet, and I had 10 people from the local fire department, sheriff and everything there, and their kind of hands were tied. Plus, they didn't know a lot that hydrogen fluoride is like bleach times 10. And if I do a post with that word or the words China, it's blocked out. You can't get it. So all I was coming up here to do is maybe an e-bike safety program, because I see these guys running down the street like crazy. All you have to do is put helmets on them. The other one was, the other one was, if you know anybody, I was thinking about a business model with after-school shop classes, because those were the mentors that really took me there. I raised an ADHD child, and he's a productive member of society. His strong points were detail, but he certainly didn't know how to spell, and he certainly didn't know how to do English. But, you know, as they get 26 years old, they start calming down and driving company cars. So I targeted on what he was good at, what he wasn't, and the biggest thing I had overcome, and nothing on you, is well-meaning teachers, great teachers, said, "You're not going to be any good unless you go to college," and he wasn't going to be able to make it at all. So having purpose and worth and hope is the best thing for mental health, and we don't have that. And I think we can do that with taking apart a toaster to start with, making a birdhouse, working on a car. So I think we can start that business model up. Anybody wants to do it, we can have, I don't know, we can take care of the kids that don't have the money to go. But bike safety, one, I can teach you guys about battery safety, because there's a lot of fires that you don't know about. City of New York lost 22 people last year, 400 fires, okay? And we have problems with the supply chain. So Amazon's starting to get on board, because a lot of those batteries that are made in China and Vietnam, when they're bad, they don't get scrapped. They go down the street and they make them into problems.
Thank you.
So if you need anything, my name's there. I'd love to help you.
Thank you.
My name's Sam Maevich. A little bit of what I said, I was going to repeat something that you just talked about, the Valencia Academy Decathlon. Congratulations to them. They placed second overall in the Orange County competition and placed first in Super Quiz. In addition to the team awards, individuals received $9,500 in scholarships. Valencia Score qualifies it to represent the district once again at the California State Competition next weekend in Santa Clara. A special shout-out to the coaches, Kaitlin Rao, Nathan Vega, and Caitlin Reuter. This success is not just a measure of the team and its dedicated coaches. It also expresses the great educational opportunities offered at Valencia and the district more broadly. The competition measures student achievement in 10 subject areas: speech, essay, interview, art, economics, social science, science, math, literature, and music. Great academic decathletes are not made in the few months leading to the competition. Their success reflects the investment of the district over many years in our schools. The specific academic legacy of Valencia developed over decades and can be attributed to several visionary administrators, including Rick Lopez, Joey Davis, Nancy Watkins, and Jamie Jauk, who coached academic decathlon with me for a few years. Over the last four years, three school board extremists drove these proven educators out of the district. Their loss to us is tragic. Last year, the Tigers gelled at the right time. Valencia brought glory to our district, being the first PYL school to finish in the top 10 at the state competition, placing seventh overall, even though they were not ranked in the top 20 going into the competition. The best schools in the nation are represented at the California State Competition. The winner of the California Competition has won the national championship in all but two years this century. Our hearts are with you, you beautiful Valencia geeks. You represent a great school in a great district. The decathlon coaches provide another example of the dedication of our teachers. Coaches divide their stipend three ways. Measured in relationship to the amount of time they dedicate to the team, it works out to less than $5 an hour. It must be rather insulting to them to hear that USI coaches are compensated as independent contractors at $50 an hour. It's not about the money. It's about respect and fairness. Now, I've got 21 seconds. That nine-passenger bus would be perfect to get them to Santa Clara.
Hello, I'm Shani Murray. I'm seeing and hearing a lot of misinformation in the community, so I just, once again, I want to thank the board for its unanimous vote to investigate district administrators to ensure we have accountability in PYL. Thank you for making sure our administrators are treating employees fairly, acting in fiscally responsible ways, and most importantly, prioritizing the education and safety of our PYL students. The fact that five of the seven were quickly cleared just boosts my confidence in their abilities, while the fact that two are still out does give me cause for concern. However the investigation concludes, I support this push for greater accountability. And I want to thank you, Renee Gray, for your strong leadership as Acting Superintendent. And Dr. Musarino, welcome to the PYL family. I've been part of this district for 18 years, and it truly is an amazing place. Thank you.
I'm Leslie Alexander, a retired teacher, a parent of two PYL grads, and a member of the community. Welcome, Dr. Musarino. Practice it. I'm pleased that PYL has the opportunity to benefit from your experience and proven leadership, and thank you, Mrs. Gray, for stepping in when we needed you. Thank you also to Mrs. Anderson for your leadership on this board. It is greatly appreciated. Mr. Frazier, at the last board meeting, you indignantly characterized the expected return of Mrs. Gray to her actual position as ridiculous. Where was that outrage over the past two years when 25 valued administrators were forced to resign or forced out of their positions? One of those administrators was from Yorba Linda Middle School, where I was teaching prior to retirement. That loss was a soul-crushing loss, not just for the teachers and staff, but for the students and their parents as well. That loss was repeated 25 times across this district, yet you showed no outrage, no indignation. Instead, you chose to support and enable the malfeasance and incompetence of Churnus and Gates. Now, that, Mr. Frazier, is ridiculous. Mrs. Blades, I understand you have recently posted statements that are both misleading and false. In one recent post, you made it sound as though a majority of the board voted to put Churnus and Gates on leave. In fact, it was a unanimous board vote that put them on leave. You also voted for that leave. I am not sure whose interests you are promoting when you share board business on social media in posts that are both false and misleading, but I'm absolutely certain those posts do not serve the best interest of our students. Thank you.
Our last two speakers for this evening, Julie Souchard. I know I got the Julie part right. Did you get the last part? All right.
You could have asked her curve at worse.
And Karen, no last name. Karen.
Good evening. My name is Julie Souchard. On March 4th, Trustee Blades posted the following on her Facebook account. Quote, "The new board majority, Anderson, Buck, and Quintero, are overseeing Orange County School of Computer Science budget being cut in half. This is not what was promised to our community and students," end quote. I reviewed the June 2024 OCSCS budget. The original budget listed $10,111,486 in revenue, $7,664,400 in expenses, and $2,478,580 in fees and transfers for an ending loss of $32,494. The first interim December 2024 budget listed $9,428- December 2024 budget listed $9,428,656 in revenue, $8,540,279 in expenses, and $2,260,694 in fees and transfers for an ending loss of $1,372,317. The second interim OCSCS budget was posted in this month's agenda, and it is exactly the same as December's budget, which means that the budget was not cut in half. It was not cut at all. I do not know why Trustee Blades would post such misinformation, but she owes the parents of OCSCS, the community, and her fellow trustees an apology for lying. She should also examine whether or not her conduct adheres to the guidelines for Pyl USD trustees and consider resigning. Thank you. Have a great day.
So, Sam, a $90,000 van for a handful of students. I thought you didn't like spending money on a select few. And for the other lady, the best way to clear someone's reputation is with an investigation. Anyways, glad to see OCSCS being recognized as it should be tonight, but it should be noted that Beth Fisher was the person who fought to bring it to life despite the ongoing opposition from Maryland and the teachers' union. I hope that opposition doesn't continue. Parents and students love the school as well as USI. The staff there has worked so hard to create an amazing learning environment. They deserve a chance to continue on their trajectory of success. And since nothing's being said about this, it's been three months and we've heard nothing on this endless investigation against Churnus and Gates. And two times now, you've had nothing to report out of closed session, Marilyn. Is this how it's going to be now that you're in charge? Didn't you campaign on transparency? So when are we going to hear the results? Or are you just planning to keep them out until they give up and go away? Because that's what this looks like. This is costing hundreds of thousands of dollars and the community deserves to know what's going on. What happens when you find nothing? How much money are you willing to spend to get rid of them for your personal vendetta? I'd love to see that transparency you campaigned on, Marilyn, but it seems your entire focus is on dismantling innovative programs and destroying the reputation of two incredibly competent administrators. With three superintendents in three months, no offense, you seem delightful, certain employees being targeted and harassed at their schools for supporting Dr. Churnus and what appears to be a coordinated slander campaign against Dr. Churnus and the programs he helped to create. It seems you've created the very chaos in this district that you claimed was happening before the election. How many vans could we have bought for the amount of money you're spending on this witch hunt? What upgrades could have been done at the Valencia Kitchen that you were so concerned about before? What are your priorities? The kids or political agendas? Bring back Dr. Churnus and Dr. Gates. Enough already.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our, uh, public comments today, and that concludes our comments.
Okay, um, let's go ahead and take, um, a 10-minute break. So we'll, we'll come back at, let's say, 9:10. Okay, we'll call us back into session at 9:16. All the shuffling. Okay, so we're going to, um, action items, 16.1. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve revisions to the public comment announcement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, um, by Mrs. Buck, a second by, uh, Mrs. Quintero, and, um, Mrs. Gray can help me on this, but this came up, um, because we were having some safety issues here. While we were in closed session, there was, you know, some fights that almost broke out and some things happened in, uh, since I've been president, yes. And, yeah, and people have been followed to their cars. And so I just wanted to reinstate what our civility policy was and to spell it out clearly. Mrs. Gray and I met with the Placentia Police Department because there was also some concerns from the, our police officers that were here. And, um, so we just wanted to address all those. And one of the main concerns was, um, removing people without being warned. And they, and they brought language to us and they said, "You, you need to make this very clear." And so, um, we took their advice, we gave it to our attorneys, and, um, that's what prompted all of this. Do you want to add anything else, Mrs. Gray?
Yes, all that occurred. And so, um, as President Anderson said, she requested that we have this meeting, and we did. And, um, just to kind of reinforce, I think, a sense of decorum is, is what your desire was. So, um, I was invited to a meeting after the meeting with PD. I was invited to a meeting with our board's attorney, Todd Robbins, and there was a discussion about the public comment, um, opening, about whether, um, it should be a little bit stronger maybe and have some language in there just about respect and decorum and behavior that was a little bit more explicit. And so as a result of that, he, um, Todd Robbins gave us some advice. He made some proposed revisions, um, to that. And then, um, in that, there were clear expectations for respectful behavior and to minimize disruptions. So I know that, um, what's before you is a, um, a look at those. And I think, you know, it's up for discussion, um, about how everybody feels about it, what, what direction they want to go.
If I could add too, um, I, I like the adding in the language to make it very clear and what the steps are. Our police officers that are here are here to protect the room, but they don't just automatically intervene. Um, that becomes the responsibility of the board president to give that direction because this is our meeting, um, and, and it's, it's that role. Um, so the, even, unless it breaks out in something dangerous, um, the police officers are going to wait. And because First Amendment right, the First Amendment free speech is really important, and so we want to make sure everybody gets heard. So I appreciate the extra language, putting in the warning, um, actually spelling it out like what we need to say so that it's official, so that we're following the law, but also protecting everybody here. So, thank you.
Yeah, I was pleasantly, um, happy to read the, when I read the revision, I was excited about it. And I think, like you said, it really covers all bases and makes everybody, not just us, but our public as well, feel a little bit, hopefully, safer and more comfortable.
Is there any concern, the fir-, the, the bottom section is, makes sense, the warning and everything. Is there any concern about being too specific? Like, because we're calling out certain areas and it's like, well, okay, this isn't one of those areas, so therefore it wouldn't apply?
I, I would actually ask Todd Robbins if he could.
That's kind of what I was asking.
Yeah, I think he should give feedback on that.
Figured it out. It's been years. Yes, Mr. Frazier, um, you're pointing to which paragraph?
Uh, in the, the first change. The individuals are reminded, when it calls out locations, is there any concern about being too specific there and not inclusive of everything?
Um.
Are you just saying all district property?
Well, all district property, but I think some of the concerns that I heard about that arose at prior meetings occurred in these locations. And so we wanted to spell it out to be clear that while you're in this room, civility is expected. When you're in the lobby, civility is expected in the parking lot. Um, just to put everybody on notice because all district property, you're right. Um, and I think there's a provision in there, the next sentence, any individual who during school board meetings disro- oh, wait.
It's at the beginning.
It is at the beginning, yeah.
It says, "on district properties," but we could.
Including but not limited to is what I think you should say.
Yeah, we could do that too.
That's, that was the point that I was like, I don't know if we're limiting ourselves. I know it says that, but.
Yeah. I mean, and the, understand too, there's other, i- if you're concerned about day-to-day operations, like at a, at a high school or at a middle school, there are other penal code provisions that are separate and apart from the board's civility policy that would apply, that would give the district the ability to keep somebody off of the property for a period of time.
Yeah, this is not for school sites. This is specifically for board meetings.
Correct.
I just was curious because, I mean, you're a lawyer. People are litigious, and if they find some loophole that they can get around if something happens.
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah.
So, if, if, if we don't have.
We can add the "but not limited to," that's certainly.
That would be helpful.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm just wondering if in closed session, we can talk about what has been occurring that, because I mean, there's been a lot of meetings and I don't think, I mean, I know I haven't, didn't know about this. And so, you know, it would be nice to have some context and to know that we've been meeting with attorneys and that there's things that are happening in the boardroom or whatever's going on.
Not tonight, right? I had to leave.
No, 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 no. I don't want closed session later. So, no, 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 no.
There is a closed session agenda item that allows for threats to public safety. Um, we can look at that closed session item to see if it would be appropriate, uh, for that type of discussion.
Or, or even too, even if it doesn't have to be in closed session, if we can just get an email that just outlines, you know, the things that were happening because like, we're kind of in the dark. I mean, I, I don't dispute that's probably happening or, or something happened, but it'd just be one of those things where it would be nice for everybody to know what's going on.
And we don't need to call a special meeting about it?
No, 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 no. No.
That's my only addition.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other comments?
Okay, so, um, do we need to amend the, um,
Is this not?
The motion to add the additional language?
We could bring it back as a second reading.
Which would be consistent with your board bias.
Okay, let's do that.
Which means we don't need to vote?
You actually.
We have to close the item, though.
We have to, we have to vote.
Sorry, what was the motion?
To approve revisions.
Approve revisions.
Approve revisions.
I would even say that with this being so, I mean, unless you guys can think of something else, I would even say we just waive the second read because this would get this kind of in, like technically, the next board meeting, it would be in.
I know. That's why I'm thinking if we just amend it to add.
I like the idea of doing the second read. We kind of got away from that, but bringing it back is always good just to clarify that it's been put in there. It doesn't change anything.
Yeah, if we were going to do the second reading, though, we would need somebody to propose an amended motion to.
It doesn't have to be who made the motion initially.
Doesn't necessarily have to be. So here's how it works. If anybody wants a quick Robert's Rules of Order. Um, so we have a motion on the table that's been seconded. Somebody can propose an amended motion. There has to be first a vote on whether to accept the amended motion. You're not approving that amended motion, you're just accepting it as the thing that's going to be on the table. Once, if that gets approved, then the next vote would be to approve and adopt the amended motion. So for example, in this case, somebody could make a motion, an amended motion, propose an amended motion to, uh, accept the public comment announcement revisions as a first reading, for example, and bring it back as a second reading at a subsequent meeting. Uh, another option would be to accept the proposed revisions with the change proposed by Mr. Frazier. And if that amended motion got accepted and the board voted on that tonight, we'd be done with this. So it's completely up to the board how they want to proceed, so.
So I've made the motion, so why don't I try to amend that?
Good luck.
Okay, so I make a motion that we're going to amend the revision to include but not limited to.
Including but not limited to.
Including but not limited to. And for the public comment announcement.
And, and for clarity, to approve it tonight?
Yes.
With the change, yes.
Approval tonight, we don't need a second read.
Okay. So, does somebody second that?
Yeah, somebody should second that real fast.
So, so the first vote is to approve the amended motion made by Trustee Buck and seconded by Ms. Quintero.
The amended motion.
But we're not adopting that motion yet. We're just, we're just approving it to become the new motion that we vote on. Isn't this crazy? Don't we love Robert's Rules of Order?
Aren't they great?
I know. All right. So, so this vote doesn't approve this yet. It just approves the amended motion.
Wouldn't it be crazy if we all just voted no?
Well, then we'd vote, then we'd vote on the original motion.
Kidding, don't do that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now, now you vote on.
Now, I can make a motion that we approve the amended motion that we just submitted.
Right, right.
Second.
Okay, so we have Mrs. Buck making a motion to approve the amended motion we just voted on, and Mrs. Quintero seconded. Uh, any discussion? Are we totally confused?
I'm holding my discussion for consent.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I am also, and I, so motion passes 5-0. Okay.
All right, moving on, uh, 16.2, approve, I'll make a motion, we approve revisions to Board Policy 1315 as they relate to the distribution of materials in schools first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mrs. Blades, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Young.
Thank you. This evening, we are proposing revision to Board Policy 1315, Distribution of Materials in Schools. You'll see that one word has been struck through, and that word is "nonprofit," in order to bring it in alignment with Board Policy 1325, Advertising and Promotion, which allows for distribution of promotional materials of a commercial nature to students or parents and guardians. This will be a first reading of the revision, and we welcome your consideration and feedback at this time.
So it was to match the wording in 1325, which is why we had the typo in the initial, that makes sense, okay. And the purpose is just simply because that is not a, it's a different, yeah, it's used to be limited, okay.
But now we allow commercial advertisements. Okay. Does it sound like there's any other questions?
It doesn't mean that nonprofits can't.
Correct.
It just means that it's not only.
Correct. Not limited to.
Who wants to advertise?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes 5-0. Okay, um, 17.1, I need a motion pursuant to Government Code 54953 to approve the employment contract for Alan Musserino as Acting Superintendent of Schools, providing, one, a term beginning February 24th, 2025, an employee's appointment as Acting Superintendent may be terminated by either the board or employee at any time for any reason. And, two, the Acting Superintendent shall be required to render up to 49 days of work. Three, the Acting Superintendent's salary should be paid a daily rate of $1,518.22. The Acting Superintendent is not entitled to any additional compensation or fringe benefits. And, four, the employee's appointment as Acting Superintendent shall be terminated upon the effective date of the board taking action to either reinstate the current superintendent or upon another individual appointed, being appointed as superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second, um, by Mrs. Quintero. Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, motion passes 5-0. Okay, this one we.
Let me just keep moving on.
Yep, 17.
Okay, 17-2, I make a motion, we adopt Resolution 24-point, or 24-15, authorizing elimination of classified management positions.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by myself, and I'm going to turn it over to, um, Mrs. Mendoza.
Um, we're, we're adopting Resolution 24-15, authorizing the elimination of classified, sorry, authorizing the elimination of classified management positions. In accordance with ED45114, EC45117, EC45298, and EC45308, classified employees shall be subject to layoff for lack of work when there has been a reduction or elimination of services. Affected employees shall be given notice of layoff no less than 45 days prior to the effective date of days prior to the effective date of layoff. Laid off employees must also be informed of their displacement and reemployment rights. The Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources recommends approval of Resolution twenty-four fifteen. After such approval, the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources will notify the affected employees listed on the Attachment A that will be released from their administrative positions effective at the end of twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Any questions?
I just don't feel comfortable with the, uh, lack of institutional knowledge of the unique location and the new model that's there, so I, I'm not going to approve this personally. I just think there's more information that needs to be found.
I'm almost same boat. I'm really uncomfortable with, um, not making phone calls or gathering information from, um, the people who may have the knowledge on this, um, you know, to do some fact finding and, I just don't, I just don't think that hack jobs, or what appear to be hack jobs, saying this respectfully, just don't think it should be occurring.
Mrs. Mendoza, you did the research on this and you feel comfortable with this, is this correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any oppose?
No.
No.
Motion carries three two, with Blades and Frazier objecting.
Okay, I'll make a motion for seventeen point three, that we adopt Resolution twenty-four dash sixteen, release reassignment of certificated administrative employees.
Second.
Is that you, Mrs. Blades? Okay, so motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mrs. Blades. Turn it back over to Mrs. Mendoza.
Education Code four four nine five one authorizes the district to provide notice on or before March fifteenth of any certificated employee holding a position requiring an administrative or supervisory credential that may be released from their position for the following school year. If the superintendent or designee recommends that the release and reassignment go forward, the board is required to take action and the employee must receive final notification on or before June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. On or before March fifteenth, twenty twenty five, the superintendent or designee notified the employees listed on the Attachment A that they may be released from their administrative positions effective at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year and reassigned for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The superintendent or designee may recommend that the board approve the resolution to finalize the release and the reassignment of these employees. After such approval, the superintendent or designee will notify the affected employees of their reassignment for the ensuing school year.
Any questions or comments? Okay, we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, motion carries five zero.
Eighteen one.
Eighteen one, I make a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty-four dash fourteen to hire a structural engineer for preparation of a seismic evaluation at Valencia High School Project number one five five seven zero eight.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Blades, a second by Mr. Frazier. Um, are there any questions or comments?
No, I think Terry Mann did a really good job of making it very clear.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think we're good on that one. Okay, so we'll move for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries five zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five second interim report with a positive certification. A positive certification indicates that based upon current projections, the district will meet its financial obligations for the current fiscal year and subsequent two fiscal years, so we're good for three years.
Okay, we have-
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Frazier, a second by Mrs. Blades, and I will turn the time over to Mrs. Velazca.
Thank you. Um, we'll go ahead and get started on, this is the presentation for our second interim report. And to go over this just a little bit, um, this is required, the governor requires us to do a budget, um, update a couple of times a year. This includes assumptions and changes since the first interim, and this is our second interim financial report. We're going to talk a little bit about some budget challenges that we're facing and what our next steps in the budgeting process will be. So this is basically an update and this is as of January thirty-first of twenty twenty-five, so even though we're in March, we're going back to January. It does include projections for the two out years for twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven, and it's a mid-year check of where the district's fiscal health is. So what is the second interim report? What is it that the board is, um, looking to approve? So there are three assignments that every report is given. If it's a positive assignment, it means that the district can meet its financial obligations for the current year and two. If it's a qualified assignment, that means it may not meet those, um, financial obligations. And if it's a negative assignment, it means the district will not meet. So we're going to get into that in a few minutes when we start going through all of the numbers. So here is, um, we went to the governor's January, um, report and it was interesting because he talked a lot, they talked a lot about California economy currently is projected to grow and it seems to be doing well, but there are some mixed signals that we need to kind of keep our eyes on. So what are the risks moving forward that could affect our budget? So we have the states being very vulnerable to the impacts of the uncertainty of receiving federal funding, what the tariffs are going to do to the state of California's economy and that how the district is so tied into how well California does, um, and changes in the immigration policy. So those are things that we just have to keep monitoring as we move forward. Assumptions. So we take a look and how do we build our budgets and monitor our budgets? So salaries are always depending on our negotiation process. Our statutory COLA for this year is only one point zero seven, which is low. Uh, for next year, it's two point four three, and for the year following, three point five two. So it's headed in the right direction, but we'll see how it goes. Our enrollment, um, for twenty-four, twenty-five is at twenty-two thousand seven hundred. Uh, we're projecting a drop in the out years of seventy, which is a zero point three percentage, so it's very small. Um, but based on those things that we were just talking about and looking at some of the data, we might be declining in those out years. Again, we'll monitor this and change it as we move forward. The attendance rate, uh, we have a very high attendance rate here, which is wonderful. It's, um, being budgeted ninety-five percent. Our health and welfare increase this year was five point three percent, and for out years, we're projecting it at six percent. And the K-three class size reduction is again negotiated language. So I wanted to talk a little bit here about what else do we need to take our, you know, keep our eyes on here. We had a lot of one-time grant money and you can see overall, we went ahead and listed what these are, and we had fifty-seven million dollars of one-time grants. And as we move into the following years, all that's left is twenty million. So that's definitely going to be affecting our budgets. Some of those items will be going away, others might need to be absorbed back into the unrestricted general fund. Luckily, we still have some ongoing grants. We talked tonight about the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, which is roughly nine million dollars a year, which is wonderful. We have Prop twenty-eight Arts and Music in our schools, three, three million. So I'm glad that at least we're keeping those. What are the changes since first interim? So the COLA didn't change, it's one point zero seven, but what did change was a twenty-five, twenty-six projection for next year. Because it dropped by point five percent, what that really means is that the district lost one point three million in the LCFF base funding year after year. And then in our supplemental funding, we're losing a hundred and twenty thousand. So even though it seems like a really small percentage decrease, it, it is a lot of money. And then for twenty-six, twenty-seven, um, was projected at three point oh eight at first interim, and that looks like it's going up to three point five two, so I'm, I'm hopeful that it'll stay that way. Our CalPERS employer rates at first interim, it didn't change a whole lot, so we just monitored those as we move forward. And the CalSTRS, um, isn't changing at all. So our enrollment, uh, we go through and we certify our CalPads numbers, so the differences between first interim and second interim is a drop of twenty-six. And then with the projection for going down seventy next year, that's where you're seeing a negative ninety-six, and then the following year, um, the negative one sixty-six because it's cumulative. On the funded ADA, that's basically taking the enrollment numbers at the ninety-five percent and adjusting, um, for those figures. And that is what we actually get our, um, money on. So let's take a look. I wanted to talk a little bit about what is the unrestricted fund? Because we have the general fund, but it's really broken up into two different sections. So for the unrestricted revenue, that is in our general fund and it's used for all general educational purposes. It includes our local control funding formula, our state lottery monies, our local revenues like interest income, donations. Unrestricted revenue is spent on items that keep the district running, such as our salaries and benefits, um, and indirectly supports the general education classrooms through the books, supplies, transportation costs, and so on. The goal with the unrestricted revenue is to have a balanced budget, so you want the expenditures to be at or below the revenue. And what's interesting is when you go ahead and you look at restricted revenue, that's different. So we find that in our general fund and in all the other funds that the district has. So you can see here, uh, we listed the earmarked for specific programs. So we just talked a little bit about the general fund and what we receive have to be spent on those programs. Our, uh, specific other funds like childcare and nutrition and deferred maintenance and so on that we've listed here, uh, very specifically states what it is that we can spend this money on. So these funds, it's okay if we go negative in the out years because we might receive the revenue this year and they'll give us the opportunity to spend over the next few years. So when we get to the actual data, um, you'll see the differences here. So on the unrestricted general fund, overall-
Could I ask a question before we-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please, sorry. Um, uh, going back just the one slide, the restricted revenue, the Special Reserve Fund for Capital Outlay Projects, our forty forty fund, um, thank you for all of the backup information. I completely appreciate that. What you mentioned in there, I just want to clarify, you said that we have the, the balloon payment that's outstanding as we pay off our debt-
Correct.
That is coming up in twenty thirty-two. And that is fully-
Covered.
Covered. That's money is sitting there in the bank waiting for that. So that's not going to hit any of our taxpayers.
No.
Thank you very much.
Not at all.
Wait, hold on a second. So we're paying that off right now? Is it already coming out of our property taxes and it's sitting over at the Orange County? Because I know that there's been a big dispute, there's big dispute, I guess, today with the Orange County Board of Supervisors about the person who's handling it and all the stuff. So when they say that we start paying it off in twenty thirty-two, have we been collecting property taxes and it's sitting in the thing and it starts getting paid off in twenty thirty-two? Is that what happens? Or do our property taxes raise in twenty thirty-two because that's where the bonds come from, is our property taxes, correct?
So we're talking two different things.
Okay.
So we've got our bonds, which is in Fund fifty-one-
Okay.
And we only show that at the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
So for bonds, we collect the property taxes, it's held, um, at the county assessor's office, and they actually make the payments on the bonds.
Okay.
So it's not even under our control. What this is, is our COPE payments, and so, um, that is something that the district, it's like personal debt for the district.
Right.
And so every year, um, we have to pay on that debt.
Right.
And so right now in that Fund forty, because we received some money from, um, this, this settlement from the city of Yorbalinda, that money is being kept in there so that we can pay the annual debt on the COPE, not the bonds.
Okay, so the CAB bonds, that we start paying that back in twenty thirty-two?
No, twenty thirty-two is only our COPs.
Okay, so when does the CAB bonds, because there's all this dispute that we're supposed to pay the CAB back. When do we start paying that back? And are we already like, as our property taxes have increased, or are they already taking it from our property taxes?
They're already taking it from our property taxes.
Okay.
And all of our bond debt is paid over multiple years as we move forward. And then I know that we have, um, I think tonight it's on the consent calendar where we bring in our financial expert that will come in and take a look at the bonds and find out are the interest rates, uh, good for the district where we maybe can refund it. We try to refund bonds when, um, when it's good for the district and that's what drops the property taxes for our community.
But the CAB bonds, you're not allowed to-
You can't change the CAB bonds.
You can't change that.
No, that one we, we have to hold on to.
So, so it's already collecting, all the property taxes we're paying, they're already collecting a bunch of money so we could pay off the COPE and then also to the CAB. And so the CAB, we start paying that in twenty thirty-two?
No. So the CABs, I think they're already, well, they're already paying for all of the CABs in Fund fifty-one that's all being held on the outside. So we, we, the county assessor collects the property tax.
Okay.
Then they turn around and they pay all of the bond debt, which is including the CABs. So that's already all being done.
Okay.
Then in Fund forty, that's the COP, Certificate of Participation, that's another loan, that's like a, like a private loan for the district. And we have the money in there to pay that debt off and that debt will be paid off, the last payment is in twenty thirty-two.
Okay, so that-
Two separate things.
So it's two separate-
Yes.
Things. So you have a COPE and then you have CAB.
Yes.
And it all comes from our property taxes?
No. Only the bonds, um, payments come from property taxes.
Okay.
The COPE payment is coming from the settlement for the, um, city of Yorbalinda. That's the money that we're using to pay off the COPE debt.
We used to have redevelopment fees and there, something happened with the state and that was taken away. And then we ended up having to sue the city of Yorbalinda to get some of that back. So that was put away in the bank to pay for the last payment.
Okay.
Okay?
And so-
I think a presentation on the CAB bonds would be helpful.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful if we understand.
The community has a lot of questions about it, so I think that would be really good for us to do.
Sure.
But also too, so this other thing, when we take out, like if, if it hit, like with the building for Valencia. So for some reason, if we had to take out a loan-
Mm-hmm.
We would, this is how we would pay that loan back if for some reason, like we had hundreds of millions of dollars in like Valencia property stuff, allegedly. That's how we would start, we could take a loan out in that same manner.
We could take out another COPE.
Mm-hmm.
But we currently, right now, have no revenues to pay that.
Got it, got it.
We would have to go out for a bond.
So we'd have to do a bond. Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that there's a hundred million dollars either. I'm just-
No worries.
Was saying what if, so we understand a little bit better.
Playing the what-if game.
Right, yes.
Sorry to derail your-
Oh, I'm good. Whatever you guys want to talk about.
No, you're doing great, thank you. But the CAB presentation, I think, would be helpful.
Sure, no problem. Um, okay, so moving forward, here is our unrestricted general fund. And I like to put pictures in just because I'm a visual person. And so you can see the green part of this is the majority of the district's money is coming from LCFF, which is money we receive from the state. Then we get a little bit of special funds from the state, uh, ten million dollars. We have some local revenue coming in of eleven million dollars. We transfer in five hundred thousand from the child, um, Development Fund to support the expenses that we're paying out of the unrestricted for that program. And then we contribute to, um, restricted maintenance, around eleven million dollars to support all of our facility upkeep. And then we contribute to support our students with special needs of thirty-four million. So overall, for our unrestricted general fund revenue, we have two hundred and fifty-four point nine million dollars. And here's where we spend it. So overall, you can see, and I'll give you the numbers on this one in a second, but, um, the majority of our money is going for salaries and benefits. And then you'll see a smaller amount, two percent goes for books and supplies, our services are around six percent, and so on. So overall, we're spending two hundred and sixty-six point three million dollars. So here's what this looks like. Um, putting the numbers in here for the current year for second interim, and then for the projections for the two out years, you can see our revenues, uh, for this year is two hundred and fifty-four point nine, next year is going to two fifty-one point nine, following year, two fifty-nine point two. The expenditures, because of those assumptions that we talked about with step and column and so forth, two hundred and sixty-six million this year, pretty similar for the following year, going up just a little bit, and then the year after that, two sixty-eight. So when you take your revenues minus your expenditures, you're either going to have a surplus, so we have, we come up ahead, or we have a deficit. So for this current year, we have a deficit of eleven point four million dollars. So I always kind of think of that top part as like the checkbook. So the money's going in, the money's going out. Um, and then we have our savings account. So our savings account, we started with the beginning balance of seventy-two point nine million. And after we absorbed that loss of eleven point four, we're anticipating the ending balance of being about sixty-one million dollars. So when you look at that and you take our ending balance- So when you look at that and you take our ending balance and divide it by our total expenditures, it's twenty-three percent. And that basically covers almost three months of expenditures for the district. And then as we go out, um, for our out years, you can see the ending fa, ending balances going down forty-six point nine and then going down to thirty-seven point nine. And you can see those percentages dropping as we move forward. And again, this is all the information we have as of January, January thirty-first.
So one question back to that.
Sure.
I'm assuming you're going to get to it, but the, um, the first interim, we showed a deficit of twelve point four. Now we're showing eleven point four.
Mm-hmm.
So we're better by a million.
Yes, we're better by a little bit, yes.
That's good.
Yeah. I like heading in that direction.
Even, [laughing] gotta be positive. Um, yeah, just because, especially in the first slide when we're talking about based on the changes in COLA, we're talking about a one point three million dollar difference.
For next year.
For next year, right.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Right, which is part of the, when twelve million for next year went to fourteen million.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
And so, so this is off of January, correct?
January thirty-first.
Was that really loud for you, Todd? Um, so, yeah, it's, you kind of jumped back. Um, so I guess my question is, is so this was in January, have you seen any like projection coming from the state like that? Anything would be different, like we're finding more money? Because I mean, I remember one time we were in a def, you know, first we were in, we had a ton of money and then all of a sudden we were in a deficit. So I mean, so these numbers potentially, in three or four months, we could change and we could be at a eleven million dollar surplus.
No.
Oh.
I wish.
Darn it.
If we find that kind of money, we gotta, yeah, that's, that's...
So another question, I was, I was, I was kidding on the last one, but...
I know, I know, I know.
The, so I have a question. When we have our savings account, is it, are we able to put like money in, like, you know how there's some savings accounts where you can gather like four or five percent interest? Do they do any type, I mean, huge accounts like this? Do, are we in that? Um, or is there like, you know, any ways that...
They, so Orange County, I mean, they went through a bankruptcy many years ago and they're very tight on how we invest our money.
Mm-hmm.
And so we have to stay in their investment pools. Um, it's just, we're required to do that. And so there's, it's like a safe investment.
Right.
And I could find out what the interest rate is that we're earning.
Well, I wasn't really talking about like the investment. I just know that there's like some savings accounts that like, you know, you put your money in there, you put X amount of dollars in there and they'll give you just the four, four or five percent in some of them, you know, versus like sometimes you're at Chase...
Yes.
And you know, you're only getting like point five percent on your, I was just curious if that was applicable to school districts.
No, we can't, we can't, we can't invest money on our own. Districts are not really allowed to invest money to make money. We actually get in trouble if we do something like that.
Right, right.
So that's why our, our bank account is with the county assessor's office and they monitor all of that.
Which is, I mean, because the point of the district is not to be some global billion-dollar company. It's to spend money for the benefit of the students.
On our children.
Right, absolutely, so.
Yeah. Okay. So because of the, um, deficit spending, this statement is being put in here. In preparing the twenty-four, twenty-five second interim budget, the board acknowledges its fiduciary responsibility to maintain fiscal solvency for the current year and the two subsequent fiscal years. District staff will be preparing a budget stabilization plan for board review prior to the adoption of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year budget. This plan will include established timelines for ongoing budget planning and actions. Reductions presented may include tighter staffing at school sites, position reductions, and non-personnel cost reductions. Under these assumptions, the board projects the need for an eleven point four million dollar in budget reductions in twenty-five, twenty-six in order to maintain fiscal solvency. So this statement is, um, required, Orange County Department of Ed actually looks at this and, uh, you'll see in a minute, we're going to go with a positive certification. But even if we present a positive certification and we don't do this and we don't start working on our budget reductions, the county could come in and make us qualified. And we don't want that. So the statement is in here and they actually get this presentation and they look for the statement.
This is the CYA statement.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, so, sorry, back to that.
Go back.
Well, no, we're, we're, continue, I'll talk later.
Okay. So now let's talk about our restricted money. And again, this is okay, we're going to receive this money and we're going to spend it on what it is that it's telling us to spend it on. So overall, um, you can see federal money is thirteen point seven million, state is fifty-seven point two, our locals two point six. And then that contribution, um, that I just talked about on unrestricted is in here. So our restricted revenue is a hundred and nineteen million dollars. And here's our expenditures again, seventy percent of it's going for salaries and benefits, ten percent's books and supplies, uh, twelve percent is services and other operating and so on. So the restricted expenditures are a hundred and forty-three point three million dollars. And when we look at those, and if you noticed, I didn't make the deficit red because I'm not concerned about this. This is, um, overall for twenty-four, twenty-five, there's a hundred and nineteen million in revenue, we're spending a hundred and forty-three. So it is a deficit of twenty-three million, but it's okay because we want to spend this money in these out years. We started with seventy-one million and we're ending up with forty-seven. And then as you move over to these out years, you can see these are the anticipated revenues and expenditures that are coming in, continuing with the deficit spending, but that's okay because we want to spend all this money. We want to get it down to zero. So, um, at the end of twenty-six, twenty-seven, the ending balance is nineteen million dollars. So then we have to take a look at, um, what is the components of ending fund balance? What are we, what are we doing with our savings account? So we have our unrestricted and our restricted, and I'll just talk for a second. The restricted, you can see, the forty-seven million dollars, it's kind of the orange column, um, we're just going to put it all into a restricted carryover because we have no choice on what to do with this money. If you go back to the green, uh, the ending fund balance is sixty-one million. We have, uh, revolving cash in our stores and our prepaid expenditures, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, not, not a large dollar amount. We are committing a five million dollars for textbook adoptions. We're putting in ten million dollars for declining enrollment, we'll keep an eye on that one. And then because we are in deficit, it's a deficit mitigation for five point two million. We have a contingency reserve of twenty million and a reserve for economic uncertainties for five, um, a five percent for another twenty million. So that's how we're assigning the unrestricted money. And then you just total them up and that's the blue column. And again, I put on here, we are filing, because of the ending fund balances, we are, um, filing a positive certification.
Question about the reserves.
Mm-hmm.
There is a maximum that we're allowed to hold, correct?
So, okay, so there's a couple of things.
Sorry to open that camera up.
No, 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 it's okay. So they, they go about ten percent. There was, there was a law that came out that said a school district should have, you know, a ten percent reserve level. Well, our ten percent are those two bottom numbers right there because the contingency reserve is five percent and our reserve for economic uncertainties is five percent. But with that, there was, um, a lot of flexibility for school districts that said, if you're going to have higher than two percent, you need to tell us what you're going to spend it on. But that law did not go fully into effect because they could have come and said, that's it, start sending in your plan on what you're going to spend your other money on and work that percentage down to ten percent. But then they held off on that. Um, they like the fact that the districts are having enough money in here to get through a couple of bad years because the state also knows that their funding levels go up and down depending on lots of things too. So they didn't actually incorporate that law, but that's, I think, what you're talking about with the ten percent.
Yeah, the maximum ten percent and the minimum of two percent, that's...
For us, because of our, um, our enrollment numbers, we're three percent.
Okay, so our minimum is three percent.
Our minimum's three.
The maximum is ten with the plan. So my point is, from a reserve standpoint, we're extremely healthy.
We are healthy right now except for the fact that we're deficit spending. So if I go back here...
But I'm saying we can't, yes, right, we go back to the...
Yeah, let me just show you real quick because I, what I'm worried about is this one. So when we come back again with the, um, estimated actuals and the adopted budget for next year...
Mm-hmm.
Then I have to push this out to twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So if we hit another ten million dollar, but if we don't do anything, we're basically eating up our reserves, our, our savings counter. And so that twenty-six, twenty-seven, when we're at a fourteen percent here, we're getting really close to that ten percent and you, and then we go out one more year, now we're in trouble. So if we do nothing, we can last here until twenty-seven, twenty-eight, you're going to go qualified. And if you ever let this go negative, um, they come in and they remove the board and the state comes in and takes over. So we don't want that at all.
Uh, we're very far from that happening. But my, but I agree with you, I mean...
Four years.
Four years, well, four years before it gets to the threshold.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and then there's lots of things that happen in four years.
Absolutely.
Right?
For better, for worse.
So many different things, for better, for worse, absolutely. Um, I guess my, my point is looking at those numbers and seeing the deficit spending and knowing what we're investing in our district.
Mm-hmm.
Because of the things that we've done by building preschools, the money we've spent on new programs, the money we've spent on air conditionings and gyms, the, like, we have done a lot of capital improvements over the last, really the last eighteen months very heavily that I think are going to, in my opinion, based on the decisions that we've made the past year and a half, are going to affect that in a positive, I know we have to be conservative and I appreciate this and I think this is good. Um, but I'm thinking that some of these investments will come back to us in student, well, intentionally or, uh, potentially in enrollment growth. Um, but I, I like that we're being conservative, that's a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
Qualified still a ways away.
[laughing] We want to stay away from qualified. Um, okay, so then, um, because of the charter school that we have, even though it's a dependent charter, it also has a requirement to show what their numbers look like. And so these numbers, this budget is actually the same as, uh, first interim, it hasn't really changed at all. And so nine point four million in revenue, our expenditures are totaling ten point eight. So they have an ending fund balance of one point three, a negative. They're just starting off, it's a brand-new school year and so, um, this will change as we move forward, I'm sure, so. Okay. Um, then we also need to look, uh, quickly over all of our other funds. And so you can see all of this money will be spent, um, for their specific purpose and they're all ending with, uh, certain fu, uh, fund balances here with the child development at four point four million, our cafeteria is healthy at fifteen point eight. Cafeteria actually has a, a plan of what they're spending their money on because the state doesn't like it when that ending balance is too high. But because of the free meals, um, you know, we've been able to have a higher, uh, ending fund balance and I know she has a lot of plans for that money too. Uh, deferred maintenance, we're ending with two point three. Our capital facilities is seven, seven point nine. Uh, our Fund Thirty-Five is actually closed up. That was money from a long time ago that was just a little bit left in there and it's all spent now. Uh, again, Ca, uh, Fund Forty, the capital outlay, that's the COPE payments we just talked about. And that's where you can see, that ending fund balance of sixteen million, it's going to keep carrying over and that's going to pay every year our COPE payments until it's paid off. Uh, the bond interest is Fund Fifty-One and that's left empty because we only report out at the end of the year. And, uh, we actually get those, that information from the county assessor's office and then we'll put it in here. And then our self-insurance is what pays for all of the medical workers' comp, property and liability for the district, and that has an ending balance of seventeen million dollars. So our challenges and our next steps. So the challenges ahead is projected low COLA for the next three years. That's going to go up and down depending on what happens in the state with the state's economy. Uh, we are losing a lot of one-time revenue and so we have to be careful with that. We have rising health and welfare benefit premiums, annual step and column adjustments have to be made. And the last point here is the state's vulnerability again to the impacts of uncertain receipt of federal funding, the tariffs and the changes in the immigration policy. So you can see, we've completed the first three reports here, like, by the conclusion of tonight. And then upcoming, we'll come back again in, um, June and we'll talk about a public hearing for the LCAP in the budget and adopt the LCAP in the budget for next year. So any questions?
I just wanted to say it again. The money that we talked about coming in from the additional billings from special ed and the, uh, the mental health, that is not included in this. So that's our surprise bonus at the end of the year.
Well, it's not included in here, but keep it, keep in mind, that's restricted. So that...
Totally get it, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's not in here because this was January thirty-first.
Yep. Okay, good. No, it's great.
I don't have any questions specific to this, but I asked for a lot of backup information and I so appreciate that. I've gotten part of the way through it, not all the way through it yet, but it's very informative and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
No, no problem.
Again, I got some of the stuff too and my printer didn't print all of it, but the Fund Twenty-Five Forty-Five, what is, what does that consist of? Because I was going through it today and I was, um, obviously looking, there's a lot of things, um...
So we have, so in Fund Twenty-Five, there's two sub-funds.
Okay.
Twenty-five, twenty-five is our developer fees. So when people are, you know, building something new...
Right.
Or whatever, we'll get that money in. And then Twenty-five, forty-five is some, um, redevelopment monies that we are still receiving. It's not a lot anymore, but it's something.
Okay, so the redevelopment fees, do we lose them or, or where does that come out of? Does that come out of our general fund or what fund does that come out of?
So that's Fund Twenty-Five, which is totally separate from the general fund, which is Fund One.
Okay.
Um, that revenue will continue, uh, we'll have to see, I'll, I'll have to pull some reports to see for this district. I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to get back to you.
Okay.
Um, it's not a large amount of money. Redevelopment money used to be really high. If you're in an area where they were redeveloping, you know, projects or, you know, whatever that they wanted to work on, there would always be some money that would come back to the school district. But then they stopped this redevelopment and so this is kind of paying off the last of those final projects.
Mm-hmm.
So it's going to be dwindling down over time, but I, I'd have to look it up and find out when it find, when it's all gone.
Okay, because I was just, when I was looking through it, it said like our revenues Okay, because I was just, when I was looking through it, it said like our revenues total was like four, four million, six fifty-six for twenty-three, twenty-four, but then went down twenty-four, twenty-five to two million, six hundred thirty-one. What I thought was interested, I was just, you know, because if you start looking through this with all this backup material we're getting, you know, we're paying for playgrounds at Glenview for like a hundred and nine thousand dollars. Tines, fifty thousand. Morse, fifty thousand for playgrounds. We had some hydration stations, which weren't super expensive, but, you know, we had to pay DSA for the classrooms, nineteen thousand each for Glenview, Morse, and Tines. Esperanza, you know, they had a lighting in their theater, three hundred eighty-seven thousand. Eldorado, material labeled for the men and women staff restrooms, forty-three thousand. Valencia High School, material for improvements and remodeling the wood shop at Valencia, fifty-one thousand. Shade Structures at Esperanza, seventy-one thousand. Valencia High School had two marquees for a hundred thousand dollars. So I was just, you know, going through here because you always, you know, it kind of seems like certain things are singled out, but then I was wondering, well, where is this fund? Like, where does it go to? Because, I mean, we're paying for a lot of stuff. You know, the intercom systems, Travis Wrench and Kramer, a hundred and seventy-six thousand replaced our intercom. So, I mean, it is like, if you look through this stuff, and if people, yeah, I mean, this is, it's, it's expensive to run a school district, and like replacing an intercom system is shocking. That's a hundred and seventy-six thousand. So I was wondering, I was, I was grateful for this because it does show how much we spend at all the school sites.
Yep.
So, yeah, so I was, I, you know, when my printer will print again, I'll be looking, you know, more at the other things, but that's where I was wondering, you know, like where this comes, you know, where this comes from, and like, how are we paying for, you know, we're using all these different ways to pay for these things, like the developer fees, we use certain things, and then this.
And for this Fund Twenty-Five, it can only be spent on capital improvements for the, for the district. That's why we're seeing all the different purchases.
Right, yeah. But I thought that was, you know, I think people don't realize how much stuff is being spent behind the scenes to make everything new and keep it going. So I was appreciative of that.
Yeah, the, the invest, seeing the actual things that we're investing in is pretty great.
We talked a little bit earlier before about doing a facilities study. We've, we've kind of looked at that before as we plan, where we're going to spend our money over the five-year facilities plan. We haven't, not that I recall, haven't seen it in a little while, but maybe that's something that we look at again and start to project where we're going to.
Actually, we've been working on that because I was curious, too. I wanted to see what it looked like, and for the money reasons. We can, we have, always have so many different projects. There's a lot of needs in a school district, and when you have bond money, that's great. We don't have bond money anymore. You can see what our fiscal situation is. So that's definitely something we are pulling together and can bring back to the board.
Thank you, because we have to do all these improvements, but we need to plan for, at when, at what point do we do that. So, thank you.
Lots of car washes you need to organize. I'm going to breed the Labradors and do the chicken and the eggs sales. Okay, perfect.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. I have one for about Orange County School of Computer Science. It's been posted all over social media that that school's budget's been cut by fifty percent. Can you?
So, no, so I think.
We just had it in the presentation.
I think what, yeah, it was, it was in here, just one slide. So I think that comment was geared more towards staffing, and so we have temporary teachers, and so every year, a school district with temporary teachers, they're basically notified, you know, your contract's going to end June thirtieth. And that school actually had predominantly temporary teachers, and so I would say probably half of their staff received that notice, but that doesn't mean that we've cut their budget because we have to make sure that that school is staffed and they have everything that they need. So.
So I will say this. I was the person who brought this up, and so what was said was the leadership at OCSCS, they met with district leadership, and they were told that, you know, they needed to cut their budget. And they said, you know, OCSCS said, hey, we were assured by Churnus and Gates and everyone, and Stein, that we would have a ten million dollar working budget to get our school off the ground for three years. And so the response that they got was, well, that's a wag. And they said, what does that mean? And they said, that's a wild-ass guess. He says sometimes people choose to carry up startup funds in multiple years, and at this point, they knew, they said they wanted to make the OCSCS budget right side up. So they said they were looking at projected decline in enrollment of up to a hundred and fifty kids, and they had a number of the six hundreds, and so they told them to prepare a budget for five point two million dollars. And then they told the principal at the time that she needed to give them what her budget cuts would be to cut the budget in half. And so when people say, oh, no, these were her budgets, she didn't want to cut anything. This was what she was told by the district she had to cut. So as you see, there was the twenty-two temps, and they don't know if they're coming back. There was an orchestra teacher. They have forty-one teachers at this site. They've cut a dean. They've cut a college and career technician, apparently. I mean, I, I don't know if I can say whatever. There's a few more positions that were going to be cut. And so what her recommendation to the district was to cut the DLA program. She said to cut the PE teachers because they have thirty-six kids in PE, and they have two teachers. She says the kids that are taking PE as a mini elective, there, there's eighty kids that are electing to go into USI to do their mini electives, and so she was talking about PE. She said that she was forced to fill a library position by the CSCA, and so there's a lot of things that she recommended to cut. So I think when people are sitting here saying, well, no, nobody was told to cut. We have twenty-two temps that are worried, you know, at OCSCS. There's twenty-two of the forty-one teachers, and then you're, you go over there, and you say, give us the budget cuts because now your budget's only going to be five point two million dollars.
So I have never said that.
Well, I'm not saying you did. I'm not saying you did. I know who said it, but I'm not saying that you did.
And I think where this is going, and we'll be bringing probably back in April, if not before that, the Budget Stabilization Plan, we are looking district-wide, not at one specific school, at our staffing ratios. Are we overstaffed? Because people are the most, you saw, people are the most expensive.
Yes, they are.
So we are looking district-wide at what can we do to try to get this deficit spending down. So they have to have teachers to run that school. If they have that enrollment, they're going to have their teachers. It probably won't be those specific teachers. I can't tell you right now until we finish doing the work that we're working on, and we can bring it back to the board at that time, but we are not cutting that budget in half.
Okay, so whoever gave that message that freaked everybody there out and said that they need to go to five point two million dollars was incorrect.
I can't speak to that because I, I don't know. I don't know what was said before I got here.
Okay, because they were told all of these cuts that had to be made. So these were the cuts that they said that they told the district, because, you know, I, you know, you make, you get told by the parent advisory committee, you get told by the leadership over there, you get told by all these people that this is what the district is telling them, and that they're saying, either you tell us what cuts to make, or we're going to do it for you. So they have to start making the hard decisions about what to cut at the school and what type of budget to have.
And the only thing that I could possibly think of is that, and I don't know, I can't speak for anybody else, but.
And it wasn't, they didn't name you at all.
Well, that's fine. I would know what I said to somebody, so.
Of course.
But we're trying to bring everything into alignment district-wide. So if we're looking at, you know, that school, we're going to be looking at, okay, what is, how many students are you going to have? What are our staffing ratios? Are you overstaffed? Definitely. And we're also having that conversation with every other school in the district.
Right.
So.
Right, so, yeah, well, I mean, it's, it's fine, but I mean, when, when they get told that they have to do this and to cut the programs, I mean, when you're looking at, when you're looking at telling the district, okay, we'll cut our DLA program because something's going to open up a Tufts free. We'll cut PE. We'll cut this. We'll cut that. You know, even talking about, you know, did they have, there was even discussion, like, do they have to cut their music program? And just start going, because, you know, obviously, they're a district charter, so they can have the opportunity to do before-school and after-school things with like Prop Twenty-Eight, things like that. And so, you know, when they're having to do these cuts, and then the parents start freaking out, like, are we going to have DLA next year here? Because this is a pros cut. Are we going to have, you know, music? Are we going to have these things? And then you, you have this going on, and so, and this is what the message that OCSCS is getting from our district, then.
So we'll be bringing back the Budget Stabiliz, Stabilization Act in April, and I think we'll have quite a few details that are in there that will be more specific to the items that you're talking about.
Okay.
And we'll talk about it then.
Is there any additional, like, we're talking about cutting costs. What about increased revenue? Like, are we looking at options there?
It's tough to increase revenue in a school district. I mean, we really are.
Like new available grants and, I mean, that kind of stuff, grant writers and.
Really, I'm looking to, like, Ed Services and so on. So they go out for all the grants that they possibly can get, but grants are restricted. So what we need is unrestricted money, and that comes from the state. If we could get the COLA up, if, you know, the state does extremely well, and next year they give us more COLA than what they told us, that's awesome.
Enrollment's a big one.
Enrollment can go up, but that trend has not been.
Oh, and attendance, that's right.
Yeah.
One percent is two point five million. That's right, because we're at ninety-five right now.
We've held at ninety-five for a long time. I'm beginning to lose hope.
No, we're up from last year.
What, it was ninety-two last year, right? But we've been sta, we've been stable at ninety-five for a while now.
For a year. No, we're up. We're up. We need to get an extra ninety-six.
We're at ninety-four point eight-eight. Is that correct? Ninety-four point eight-eight, and our goal, which we started a little late this year, is to go up to ninety-five point eight-eight by the end of this year, and we are doing major stuff throughout the district to reinforce, and, I mean, I'm talking short of sending somebody on a trip, on a yacht somewhere. I mean, that's.
Hey, I'll go to school for that.
Honestly, there are a lot of reinforcers that we're.
Take the vans.
Instituting. Yeah, the vans.
Here we go. Hey, get, get them to school, right?
And, and if I, if I may, to your point, trustee Fraser, when it comes to the unique needs of each school, so in some schools, there's specific training that teachers have had, like, obviously, if you have a DLI program or another type of program, and it might be costly to move teachers out, even though that might necessarily, that might be based on vacancy and seniority and, 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 and other factors, something you have to really sit down with your association and talk about how to ensure that, you know, we don't have to take someone who's trained already in a particular program and have them go somewhere else, and then have someone else come in, and then they have to get retrained. So, but like, as we discuss just the unique needs of the schools, that's why it's important that all these meetings are held with the Ed Services and, and business team so that we truly know exactly how to support those, those schools that also are going to be cost-effective. But, but the reality is, cuts, yeah, will, will need to happen to some degree.
Thank you, Joan. That's great.
Thank you so much. Okay.
We still have to vote.
We still have to vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries five-zero.
Moving on. Eighteen point three, I'll make a motion. We approve the Orange County School of Computer Science Charter School, twenty-four, twenty-five, second interim report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mr. Fraser.
So in that presentation, there was a slide that discussed the, the charter school. So basically, it is, you've already seen the presentation.
It's the same.
It's the same.
Same. Okay. Any other further questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? I think we're good.
I'll make a motion for this one. My daughter actually took this class, so I saw the old book. I'm glad we have a new book.
Okay, before we start, do we want to do all these textbooks as a block?
Yeah, that would be totally fine.
Yes.
If, if you guys agree, then we'll do.
Make a motion that we move them all together? Yeah.
Okay, let's. We're getting, we're getting close. Okay, so textbooks. I'll make a motion that we approve AP Human Geography, Psychology, Give Me Liberty in American History, and Sociology Down to Earth, and Higher Level Chemistry.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Buck to approve all the textbooks from nine point two down to nine point five, and a second by Mr. Fraser. Is there any?
I'd like to invite Mr. Young to the lectern to give a brief introduction of the process used.
Do we need it?
All right, thank you. As you well know, our curriculum council meets four times a year to review textbooks. It actually starts way before that, when the teachers actually get together to review new materials that have come their direction, and a lot of the textbooks that we're adopting in social science have, have been long since overdue. Some of them twenty years, as you saw in the report. So we wanted to make sure that our students have the access to the, the most updated curriculum and materials as is laid out in our board policy and our resolutions. So a lot of teachers took a lot of time meeting with the publishers, reviewing many different versions of every textbook available, and then finalizing and coming to consensus on what would be the best textbook for our students. I mean, they did that for every subject area listed, and they submitted that to curriculum council for review and recommendation, and then it went on a thirty-day display for the public in our lobby over here. No comments were made by any of the public that reviewed any of the textbooks that were on display, and so we humbly bring it before you guys for approval so that we can make the purchase and get these textbooks in our students' hands next school year.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments?
No, I said I'm saving everything for consent.
Okay. This is the first time I've looked at a sociology book. I've never taken it before.
Really?
Fascinating reading. I learned a lot, and.
Good to take sociology in college.
So I thank you guys for doing such a great job, and I know these books will go into good use. Okay, ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Here we go, baby.
Okay, to the consent. Actions proposed in the consent calendar, items are consistent with approved practices for the district and are deemed routine in nature. The trustees receive board agenda backup information in advance at the scheduled meeting and are prepared to vote with knowledge of the block vote items. Is there any items to be polled?
The only one I was going to poll, I was going to pull something else, the twenty-one point six, the Linda Vista Shade Structures, just to see what budget it was coming out of, but I realized what budget it's more than likely coming out of now. And so, so twenty-one point ten, and that will be it for me. And that will be fast.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, can I have a motion then to approve?
I'll make a motion. We move the block minus twenty-one ten.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mr. Fraser. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. Okay, twenty-one ten.
Okay, I may have pulled the wrong one.
Oh, no.
I, I know I'm stuck now.
I, it's happened to me, so I get it.
Yeah, I may have pulled the wrong one.
Which one?
Um, I wanted the one where we had the licensing agreement for four hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Which one was that? Was it, maybe, maybe it was twenty-two.
Licensing agreement for what?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, sorry. Okay. Okay, so I make a motion to approve twenty-one point ten, and I'm repolling twenty-two point ten, however we do this. Somebody just seconded our thing.
We've already approved it.
Okay. Can I?
Second.
Okay.
For twenty-one ten.
Perfect.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Blay, the second, by Mrs. Buck for twenty-one ten.
No discussion, let's vote.
Okay.
Because I wrongly pulled it.
Yeah, pulled the wrong one.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And since we've already approved it, I was not doing anything to approve it, but I know that in the past, we've had a lot of talk about licensing fees, and so I was just pointing out a lot of things. We have licensing fees for a lot of different things, but, you know, right here for our program, we have a license with Edmonton for Apex and Corone Learning licenses. So we pay four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred just for licensing fees for three years for Buena Vista, Parkview, El Camino, and our credit recovery school. So I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, when we're talking about licensing fees in the past, we pay licensing, licensing fees for a lot of different things. And so just wanted to make people aware that this is kind of more of a standard thing, and I didn't know that until the other licensing fees were brought up. And so I'm just bringing it, you know, for everybody's knowledge, and making you aware. Thank you, Todd. I'm rambling, aren't I?
Can we talk a little bit about that, or is it kind of too late at this point?
Apex is great. Can I say that?
Yeah, Apex is great.
Yeah, we can discuss.
Never mind.
We don't, I don't, I think it was just making a point. It wasn't.
I think if we could get some clarification on those licensing fees, because I thought they were for students. So, I don't, we don't want to discuss it. We're not going to discuss it, but if we could get a clarification, Dr. Young?
What's the curriculum?
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Perfect.
That would be perfect. Okay, we have made it to communications and board reports. So we'll start with you.
I'll try to be very short. Okay, starting with me? Okay. I participated in the Linda Vista Read Across America and read to the kindergarten and third-grade classes, which was very fun. I did that on Friday the, I can't remember what day that was, seventh. And so, too, I wanted to congratulate Sammy Sanchez and Olivia Davis. There's the first, they are Esperanza's CIF state champions in wrestling, and this is the first time a boy and a girl from the same, same school have claimed the same title. And Sammy Sanchez is also a world champion in wrestling, and so I did not know that until I found that out at the CIF deal. She also pointed out CIF champs for Eldorado Girls' Water Polo, and then also to this coming weekend, Eldorado. They have their twenty, twenty-five mock trials, state finals, after they won the OC championship, and so they're going to be participating in that this weekend, so good luck to Eldorado. And then, so another thing, too, people continue to say, and it was brought up tonight in public comments, so I'm actually glad I printed the email. We keep getting told on social media, and we keep getting told about people being fired. And so I was just going to read this email just to prove that we did not fire anybody. This is from April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, seven oh nine AM. Says, good morning. This is from our, Michael Matthews, our interim superintendent. This morning, Dr. Rick Lopez provided me with a letter of resignation effective June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. He has accepted a position as the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources in Claremont Unified School District, beginning on July first, twenty-twenty-three. I have informed Dr. Churnus and advised him that we will follow his lead on the recruitment and hiring process, and that we will keep you informed on the next steps. So the thing that Dr. Churnus ran him out, somehow board members ran him out, or we fired him, or whatever. I mean, he took a job in Claremont, and here's the proof of it. He was not fired from Placentia or Belinda. And then another thing, people mentioned Giordano, and then it says, same day except in the afternoon, April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Good afternoon, board members. This afternoon, Dave Giordano provided me with a letter of retirement effective September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. I have informed Dr. Churnus and advised him we will follow his lead on recruitment and hiring process. I will keep you informed on the next steps. So as people continue to come up here and say people have been run out, people have been fired, this is one of the people who are claiming that we fired, maybe one of, a lot of people are claiming a lot of things. And so I just figured, I came across the email, and I thought, you know what? I'll read this at the board meeting, just to prove that, you know what? It was under Mike Matthews that he resigned, and he went to Claremont, you know, to become the HR Assistant Superintendent over there, and it was an opportunity for him. And so I just hope that we can maybe just stop with this whole, we fired Rick Lopez, we ran him out. I never had any issues with Rick Lopez. In fact, I don't even think I ever had a meeting individually with him. And so, as you know, in board meetings in closed session or even just dealing with this, you know, there, there can be, like, you know, very little interaction. And so just for the record, I just wanted to, you know, for it to go on record, so that the social. I just wanted to, you know, for it to go on record, so that the social media posts that we fired Rick, or we fired all these people, um, hopefully can start to, you know, cease. Um, I would also like to see if next month on our board, um, agenda, if we can have a resolution to protect girls', um, sports. Um, because Gavin Newsom obviously just came out and said that this was an unfair practice. I don't necessarily know why some of these pe- things have been put into law, but I think, um, on the agenda would be nice, um, to support girls' sports and to, for our board to, um, obviously I don't think we can pass anything, but just have a resolution that we believe in protecting girls' sports and the safety of girls' sports. Um, and I was also going to talk to, um, our, you know, acting superintendent about a couple other things that had come up, um, about some of the months that our people are celebrating, I know some of the school sites, not all the school sites, um, some of the principals are, um, are opting to have, you know, certain months, um, I guess, uh, certain, certain months, what would it be, uh, to just, yeah, like, you know, Pride Month, whatever it is. And so while I have no issue with that, I have had a elementary school reach out to me, and they were very concerned about a certain month that the principal is going to be promoting, and so they did ask if they can opt out. And so I did say I would ask to see if they can opt out of these lessons, if they don't want their, you know, their kindergarten or their first or second grade, um, you know, to be a part of the lessons. And so I think that that's, um, something that we should a- address. Um, you know, if the parents, like, what is the option for the parents when something is kind of going out of the normal school activities? And so that was it, um, and, uh, yeah, and so, uh, yeah, that's it. I, um, I was gone, I was gone on a lovely, um, vacation to New Orleans for Mardi Gras, and I, um, really enjoyed the culture, and, um, so I didn't get to, you know, do everything that I wanted to, but I came back a little refreshed. So, got my energy back. Um, and I wasn't eaten by a croc, or an alligator in the swamp, so. They tried. But, uh, yeah, so I just, um, looking forward to, um, I'm not sure if I'll make Sundays run, but looking forward to the principal for a day next week, looking forward to all the activities that are coming up. And then really just good luck to all of our, um, our students, our students are absolutely killing it. You know, academically, athletically, I mean, they're just doing a great job, so it's an exciting time, um, you know, to be a part of our school district, and that is all.
All right, um, I'll make mine short, but I also want to say congratulations to all the teams and the individuals who, um, had a great CIF season, and for the academic decathlon team, and also mock trials, so I'm just excited to see how all those results come out, and I'm very, um, excited for them and wish them the best of luck as well. Uh, this month, I attended the Venture Choir Concert, which you spoke about earlier. I was there with, with, um, Mrs. Gray, and we had a great time, and we were also there too as well. And, um, I would like to see, I would like to see more promotion on it next year, and if we could sell out the pack, that would be amazing. It was a fundraiser, and it was our first concert, and I literally, I don't think there was a dry eye in, in the house. It was just remarkable, the job they did, and, um, yeah, I can't wait to see what else they come up with and how much bigger and better the show gets. Um, but yes, they did a wonderful job, and like I said, shout out to them and all the students who participated, the parents that were there. It was just a wonderful environment. Um, Esperanza, I attended the Esperanza fundraiser that they hel- hosted at the pack as well, their show choir, um, um, competition. That was amazing, um, to see all the different schools. There was even a school from Indiana that attended, and to see how much, um, effort and detail they put into, every school put into their props and their, even their lighting scaffolds and, you know, the performances that they had. I'd never been to a event like that before, but I am definitely going next year, and I'm hearing a family member of mine might be there too as well, so, performing, so I'm even more excited to see that. And, um, hopefully, like I said, we can, um, roll that, and they'll have it again next year. Um, I did not get to see Esperanza perform, um, since I was running a little behind, but I can't wait to see them actually perform as well. Um, I went to the Valencia Cafeteria Ca- Cafeteria Tour for the new construction, um, and, um, I'm excited to see how that project turns out and how that gets going. It's going to be amazing for the school and for all the students there, um, and especially their cafeteria, um, staff to have that new, um, construction and the new setup, so that's going to be amazing as well. And then I think that's about it, I'll stop right there. Thank you.
All right, well, I've been chained to my desk figuratively, not literally, uh, the last month, so, um, I don't have a whole lot to report, other than, um, the, the new scoreboard that went at Esperanza. Uh, just seeing the things that we're doing around our campuses, and the air conditioning we put in the gyms, and the things that we're investing in our, our school sites that are benefiting the students is so great. Um, dad brag, my daughter got to sing the National Anthem for that day, so that was fantastic and phenomenal. Um, and then I didn't get to go to the Read Around America, because, uh, we were traveling to, uh, Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, um, touring the college with my son, and I don't know if, um, like, if you've had kids that you've gone through this college touring thing, getting on campus with your kids and seeing the places that they can be, and the opportunities that open up to them because of the things that they've done here, and they've learned in the classrooms, and, uh, in the, whether it's in the auditorium, um, choir, or for, on the, on the field for sports, or any other extracurricular things, the, the opportunities that are coming to these students, if they are able to, and I say this every time, exercise their talents, and really hone their skills at a place like this, they are really going to succeed outside of that. And that's just really the, the tip of the iceberg, getting to see your kids uh, in a new environment, that's like, wow, this could be an amazing opportunity for him to be at specifically. And, um, I just think that it's so cool to see the things that are happening in the district that are putting kids in positions where they can succeed outside after they leave here. I just want to continue to make sure that we focus on that. Students first, investing in our schools, investing in our students, and I'm just really happy to be a part of this, and hopefully I have more. Um, well, I'm going to be back in my office tonight, so I'll see you next month.
Noisy. Um, well, I just have a few things that, I don't have a whole lot to report out. I, um, have been super busy with work, so I haven't been able to get out to the schools. Yes. Um, but I've got a lot coming up on my list, um, many of which were mentioned tonight, like artworks, the opening night. I'm so looking forward to seeing that over at the Nixon Library um, on March 31st, for those of you who didn't hear it earlier. Uh, North Orange County ROP has a board meeting tomorrow night, followed by OCSBA dinner meeting. I'm going to try to hit both of those. Um, the Holocaust Art and Writing Contest, looking forward to on Friday, followed by the Sham Rock and Run, and principal for the day next week. So we've got a lot of, all those fun spring activities. And I mentioned before, but just thank you so much to the staff for the list of questions that I had asked, that all that backup information has been provided. I am very thankful for that. And that's all for me.
Okay, first I want to congratulate our academic decathlon, our mock trial, our wrestling state champions, the Eldorado, um, water polo team for their first CIF, um, champion for that school. That's just amazing. I'm a water polo mom myself, so I follow those sports. Um, so this month, um, I was able to attend, um, a CIF soccer game for Valencia, for the girls' team, and watched them play their hearts out. Unfortunately, they lost, but they did such a great job, and, um, I'm very proud of those girls. Also, I attended the choir concert for Kramer and Valencia, and it was such a fun night to see the impact of the extra money through Prop 28, um, through the arts program that's come through. Um, they were able to hire a voice coach, and many of these students were singing solos and duets, and my favorite, um, number of the night was, um, a middle school student from Kramer, she sang a song that her mother wrote, and her dad accompanied her on acoustic guitar. And it was, the song was called "You and I", and the mom wrote it when she was pregnant with her. And it was, it was a harp, it was a tearjerker, and, and seeing some of these kids that have never sung solos or duets get up, and just to feel that family support and that the kids supporting them and encouraging them, it was just a really, a, a great evening. I also toured, um, and got to see all the wonderful things that are going to happen at Valencia for the cafeteria. And I also attended a free CSBA, um, workshop given by Braver Angels, and the title of the workshop was being Effective School Board Leader During Paralyzing Times, so hopefully I can take some of those tools and use them. Um, I was able to visit El Camino, and I had a great, um, tour of the school, and hearing more about all the wonderful things that they're doing at that school, um, when I walked into, um, a physics class, and they were working on an experiment trying to make safer helmets for football players. And so they were exploring, um, velocity and math, and using different products and, and keeping track. And so it was just really great to see that, and I learned that they've added some extra electives this year, they're starting a magazine, and I was going to bring it to show you, but I forgot it. And, um, and they're also doing, um, weekly broadcasts, and, um, I, they sent me a link, and I got to watch what the kids are doing, and it's really fun. And, um, it's, it was, it was really cute. And, um, we, we've talked a little bit tonight about their bridge pro- their edge program and some of the things they're doing, so congratulations to them and all the hard work they're doing. I also had the privilege of, um, reading at Read Across America, and I went to Morris, and I got to read to a four or five combo in a fifth grade class, and I also went to Travis Ranch, and I got to read to a TK class. And just a side note, I don't know what they're doing over there at Travis Ranch, but that TK cap class was the the best behaved class I've ever been in. Those kids were, I was just shocked. I kept thinking, what are the teachers over here doing? But they're doing amazing work, and, and, um, yeah. And I just wanted to thank the many parents and staff who make, who make these celebrations for our students and make these fun events. Um, it's a lot of hard work to pull these together, and to organize the volunteers to come reading, and I know a lot of work goes into it, so my special thanks to all of you guys. And, um, just some upcoming events, don't forget to come out on Sunday to the Sham Rock and Run. And, um, also, um, don't forget to put in your calendar, um, love Placentia on May 3rd, and, uh, love Yorba Linda on April 26th. Great way to get community service, get involved, help support our local schools. And that is the end of my report. Okay, so tonight, we're going to adjourn the evening in honor and remembrance of Cameron Nunes. She passed away on January 31st, 2025, and Cameron served as a dedicated childcare teacher at Sierra Vista Elementary childcare, and was a valued member of the Placentia Yorba Linda Unified School District for six years. She was alum of the, the school district and em- exemplified a deep commitment to the education and the well-being of our students. She's the daughter of Cheryl Townsend, a retired PYLUSD employee for 30 years, who was part of our Fiscal Service Department. On behalf of the Board of Education and the entire, entire district community, we extend our heartfelt condolences to the family, colleagues, and all those whose lives she touched. She will be greatly missed by our district and the community. And I'll make that motion. Thank you. So we have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, a second by Mrs. Blades. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried five oh, and the meeting ends at 10:46.